I hereby call this meeting to order. And this is November 17th, 2020 at 5:34 PM. This is the Curriculum Evaluation Committee for the National Board of Education. As Chair of the Curriculum Evaluation Committee, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant with Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe or listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized pursuant by the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are A) providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or electronic means. To join by phone, dial 1-877-853-5257. Meeting ID 878-0304-0042. Passcode 474314. Providing public notice of necessary information for accessing this meeting. We previously gave notice of the public and necessary information for assessing this meeting through the public postings. Instructions also been provided on the Nashua School District's website at www.nashua.edu and publicly noticed at City Hall. We've provided a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access and adjourned the meeting if public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the Right to Know law. So here we go. I'm going to first call the committee members. Ms. Paula Johnson?
Present by myself.
Thank you. And filling in this evening, we have Ms. Heather Raymond.
I'm present. My kids are in the room. They're just literally crawling on the floor so we don't see them.
And I am here in the room by myself with earbuds in and we have a quorum. Ms. Odin, also from the Board of Education, is joining us. Would you state what your...
I don't think I need to say here. You can just say the following people are present.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So maybe as we go through, we were going to, I'll go through everyone who's listed here and then we're going to go around and everyone will get an opportunity to introduce themselves. We have also present is Lisa Jengres, Dana O'Gara, Stacy Hines, Gabe Falcirano, Greg Rodriguez, Susan Rourke, Tara Consilla, Keith Richards, Gina Lopez Casarosco.
Rosco.
Rosco, thank you. I apologize. Mike Mahoney, Mr. Anthony Parker, Nate Burns, ETV, Natalie Bell Hummer, I apologize for not getting that correct, and Angela Constantino. Shortly, we will also expect a presence of possibly Ms. Bobby Bagley. So let's see. Ms. Jengres, would you like to let us know what you do in the district? We wanted a little, Mrs. Johnson, before the meeting, could ask for kind of introduction for anyone?
Hi, Lisa Jengres. I am the Athletic Director for the School District.
Thank you. Ms. O'Gara?
Yep. I am Dana O'Gara, the HR Director for the District.
Thank you. Mrs. Hines?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Stacy Hines, Director of Communications for the School District.
Thank you. Mr. Falcirano?
Good evening. I'm Gabe Falcirano, the Principal of Patrick Middle.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Greg Rodriguez, Director of Technology.
Mrs. Rourke?
Good evening. Susan Rourke, English Department Head Teacher at Nashua High South.
Everybody probably knows Tara Consilla by now, but you can welcome, go introduce yourself.
Hi, Tara Consilla. I am the Executive Secretary to the Superintendent.
Mr. Richard?
Hi, everybody. Keith Richard, Principal of Nashua High School South.
Nurse Gina?
Hi, I'm Gina Lopez, Head Nurse of the Nashua School District.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you for letting us join you tonight. I'm Mike Mahoney. I'm the Principal of Biocentennial Elementary.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Good evening. I'm Anthony Parker, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary. I'm standing in for Garth this evening.
Thank you so much for being here on his behalf. Mr. Burns?
I'm Nate Burns, Principal of Nashua High School North.
And I think we have Ms. Constantino?
Hi, Angela Constantino, Epidemiologist with the City of Nashua Division of Public Health.
Thank you very much. And finally, Ms. Bell Hummer?
Hi, I'm Natalie Bell Hummer. I am the Penetrau Middle School Science Curriculum Liaison, and I'm a teacher.
Excellent. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. Okay, so our first item of business, we have a pretty hefty agenda this evening. And it's going to start out with a survey for parents. We got some advice this afternoon from Stacy Hines that the intent is to send this out tomorrow to find whether the students in the district are interested in staying remote or coming to the building. So Ms. Hines, would you like to give us a little overview on that, please?
Yes, thank you. Essentially, this is the second half that complements the survey we sent out at the beginning of the school year, late summer, I believe. And this is an opportunity for us to learn which families in our school district want their students dedicated to learning remotely exclusively. And this information will be a big help to our principals and help with their planning, planning for their staffing, and just trying to help make things run smoothly in the second half of the school year. If you remember, the initial survey asked if families could commit to giving us an indication of the type of model that they would like their children to learn in this year. That was through January, so this one will pick up from January through the end of the school year.
Okay. So I think we have some questions from the committee members. My first question myself is that the intent of this, the way it's written, is that you'll make your choice now, and if you choose this option, you'll be staying remote. That will be the commitment to this for you?
Right. Again, this is for planning purposes. You know, none of us really can predict what things are going to be like come beyond springtime or whatever. So this is just to allow us to staff, kind of make plans for staffing, the demand for teachers, the demand for teachers with maybe exclusively remote students. So that's the purpose of the survey. We're certainly not, we want people to sort of think about how they want their children to learn. We know that we're just trying to be considerate and honor the decision of our families who have extended family members or members living under their roof who they are particularly concerned about with the pandemic.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you. I won't support this, and I think the wording needs to be changed a lot in this survey. I think the survey needs to add whether or not we want our students back in school full-time and/or remote learning. I think that we never gave parents a choice. We only gave them two choices, either hybrid or remote. And there were a lot of parents that were left out of the surveys because we didn't give them three choices. I've listened to them on both sides of the aisle here. There were some children that do very well remote, and then there's a lot of children that were failing because they're not in the classroom. And my heart breaks for these parents and these students here. And I'm not going to support this. I think the language needs to be changed in here. I don't think it's, the language is very professional. I think that needs to be corrected here. And I think we need to give the parents a choice, either full or remote. So I'm going to make a motion that we send this to the full board with the language in here to add, will you, are you interested in having your students return to school full-time? We could put a date certain, maybe January 4th, or would you rather keep your students to remote for the rest of the year? Because we're not allowing our students, everybody, the same opportunities here when we have children that are home and they're remoting and they can't do it because now they're getting depression, anxiety, and that's not giving them a free and appropriate education that we're supposed to be giving our students. And so I think that we need to clean this letter up a little bit, and I think we should be able to give the choices to all the parents in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. And Ms. Raymond?
Geez, I really don't want to wait in here, but I think I have to. Couple things. I don't think this is the kind of thing that the Board has historically had to motion or approve. I can't think of another time where the Board has, like, in my experience where the Board has motions to approve or disapprove a survey. Second, I don't, I'm really uncomfortable with the idea of having a date certain of January 4th. Our numbers really went way up over the weekend again. We've already talked about staying remote after the Thanksgiving holiday. I foresee a plurality of Board members wanting to do that again after the Christmas holiday. So I just, I have a lot of issues with it. As I feel like, I don't want to step on the toes of the principals who need this data in order to do their planning, knowing that the second semester for the high school starts at the end of, wait, I'm making myself look bad here, the end of January-ish. So I want to make sure that they have the information that they need. If I recall correctly, it took like two or three weeks to track down all of the parents who didn't respond or couldn't respond last time. And then we have to crunch all that data and send it out to the appropriate principals, and then they need to do their jobs with their teachers. And I'm overwhelmed thinking about all that work. So best of luck to all of you.
Yes, back to you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I got the numbers today, if I'm correct. There's 355 active cases. There's 89,000-plus people in this city. I couldn't get all of the numbers. I was on the phone with Ms. Bagley earlier this morning. I was trying to get as many numbers as I could. I had to go to the website. I wasn't able to do that. But I'm just trying to calculate the population and the students. Kids are not spreaders. If you read all the documentations, kids are not spreaders. We can make the accommodations for these kids to be back in the classrooms with the mask, and I guess we're getting Plexiglas probably between students. I mean, this hybrid is just not working. Two and a half days for kids to be in school, half a day. Why a half a day? They're already in school. Why is it at least two full days, three full days? We're only giving half-days. And they're not learning. So we're failing our kids because they're not learning here. And so I've gone through all the paperwork. We started doing this at our last meeting, and a calendar, hybrid calendar. We have more open spaces than we have filled-in spots here. And we've got seniors. What about these seniors that need to graduate this year? We're taking their year away. Unfortunately, last year, it happened in March. This year, they don't even have a year. And if I had students in school, and some people remember me with my students in school, I was out there fighting for them every day for what they needed at school. And that's what these parents are doing. And yeah, it might not be what the Board did back when, but we're giving information. We basically were asked to approve this letter, if I'm correct, but I just can't approve this letter. I can't because it's, you're asking only one type of learning. And so the kids that cannot learn remotely, we're throwing them out the window with the bathwater. We're saying that they have to learn remotely or they're not going to be able to really learn. And so I'm just not going to support this. And I've been saying since day one, and I'm consistent, that the kids should be back in school. They are not spreaders. I have read all the documentation out there. I listened to everything, and we're not giving these kids a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So based on this afternoon's email, quite honestly, I know we had this on our agenda to talk about it, because I think it is relevant to the January model, in that there might be some parents, if we choose to go hybrid, they might, as opposed to a full-in day, that would choose to stay remote instead of two days in class and two days home. That is the reason that I think that the poll should be held up a little bit until after we define the calendar. However, I don't think that is actually the will of the district office at this point. I think the intent is to send this out tomorrow, and there was just more of an advisory of that it is going out. I would like to say that the wording was changed from our original document that was provided in our packet on Friday. And actually, Tara, can you confirm if that was changed in the document online or not? Is it updated to what we got in the email today?
I would have to say it was not changed online.
Okay. So I do think that there were some positive changes in the new wording, that it says, I think the key here is knowing which, let's see, please complete, what's the difference here? Remote only through the end of the school year. It did actually take out the January 4th date. It removed that. And I think it says, knowing which families are committed to remote learning and do not want to pursue hybrid or in-person models of learning is very helpful to us planning for the second half of the school year. Because we want to ensure both staffing and safe school environments during the pandemic, this decision is considered binding through the last day of school. So the only question on this survey is your email address, your student's first and last name, will they participate in remote or will they want to go in-person? I think, in my opinion, the wording of this document says that if you are, if you check "no," then your intent is to go back into the classroom. Is that accurate, Stacy?
No, it just basically means, again, like I said, we just wanted to focus on those families who wanted their children learning from remotely, not being in school. So basically, if you say "no," you're receptive to the other two models of learning. So by a parent checking "yes," it says here, yes, remote learning only. "No," meaning you're receptive to the other two.
So this is commitment, this is committing, it's a commitment for the folks that want to go remote. However, it's not necessarily an agreement for the folks that want to go back in the classroom. Is that an accurate statement?
Right. This is not an opinion poll type thing where, you know, what do you favor? This is just surveying families to be sure that they let us know they are just committed to remote learning only.
Yes, Mrs. Johnson?
So it's just committed to the people for remote learning. So what about the other types of learning? So that's kind of left out in the cold. So we're just committing to remote learning with nothing else in a vision for either hybrid or back-to-school full-time. So that's all this is saying. You're committing to remote. Everybody else is pushed to the side and will worry about, well, then it should be on the survey. This survey should be talking about everything. Are you interested in remote learning and/or, I hate to say hybrid, or full-time school? You're only doing one part of a survey, so why would the other half of the survey go out?
The purpose of this poll is, it's not an opinion poll, asking parents to say, do you prefer, you know, this model, the second model, or the third model? This is just giving the parents who only want their child to learn remotely, to let us know, so that the principals know. So they know, for instance, if you're a principal of an elementary school and you have 30 students in a classroom, and oh, 29 of the 30 are going to be remote only, then you know you have to make an adjustment, possibly in the teacher assignment, to making sure that that teacher is assigned to those 29 remote students. And maybe they have another class of 30 students and only five. Well, maybe the principal will say, gee, I need to combine this class and have this teacher devoted to remote learning. So it's really, it's a tool for the principals to plan staffing. It's not an opinion poll. We're not asking parents to give us an opinion of what they're receptive to with the remote learning model, the hybrid model, or the in-person model. This is just to identify those families who are remote only so that the principals can make plans for staffing.
I'm not going to support this. I mean, if you're going to have to have a vote on, I'm not supporting this because I think, whether it's an opinion poll or it's not an opinion poll, there's going to be parents that are going to talk amongst the talk, and that someone's going to say, why didn't we get this? And why haven't we, I want to send, one, my student wants to be remote. The other one, I think, needs to be back in the classroom. Why didn't you ask whether or not we want to be back in the classroom? And so it's going to cause problems like previous polls did, not opinion polls, but other polls did in the past. That became a nightmare, that we had to redo, redo, and redo. And then everybody was all confused from the redos. So I just can't support this. I don't think it's going to get to the end goal where we need to be, and we need these kids, all the kids, to learn in their learning style, not just being remote, that some children, some students do very well, and I feel that we're leaving a whole group of kids out in the cold. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. So as I said, I don't know that this is something that, in this committee, we have the power to hold up as its intent is to go out from the central office tomorrow. I think it was more of an advisory for what it means. I do, in my opinion, I would read, I wish that we would hold it up until after the 30th so that we could finalize and get a vote from the full board what the schedule will be in January. I know from my personal opinion, that's going to affect how I would vote for my child to go back. If we're in a hybrid model, I'll probably choose a remote option. If we're in a full-in-person model, I will probably choose a to-go-back, send her into school. So I think that, I'm a little discouraged by that, but as I said, I don't think we have any power to hold it up at this point. That would be a discretion of the central office. My one question for the principals on here is if we were looking at getting the survey out tomorrow, it gets back in the day before Thanksgiving, nobody's really going to be, I hope you guys are actually taking a couple of days off for Thanksgiving break, and no one's actually going to be back in the office before the 30th to tabulate the information. Would it put you terribly behind if you were to hold the survey until after the meeting on the 30th?
The tabulation is actually being done by the School District's data analyst. So she needs time to tabulate the responses. If you remember, when we did the poll earlier, we got about 10,000 responses. So it takes a little bit of time to get that done. So time is of the essence so that we can tabulate this and get this information in early December to the principals, so they can then sort through and analyze and sort by families and so they can learn what their preferences for their families, whether or not they want remote only or receptive to the other two models.
Okay. All right. Well, then, I guess we'll move on. Ms. Raymond, do you have an opinion on this? All right. Thank you. I guess we will move on to our next subject. And you know what? I actually, since it wasn't written on the agenda, I mistakenly, we had been reached out to by the National Teachers Union to request for public comment at this, requested public comment at this meeting. Do we have any folks waiting right now, Tara? Or should we wait until the end of the meeting for that?
I don't have anyone in the waiting room.
All right. So we'll save that to the end, and people can bring their thoughts. But that probably could be something that we could do later if we'd like. All right. So the survey is going out. Best of luck to everyone. All right. So our next item of business is transitioning between instructional modes. So we are talking about, sorry, let me get my little stack of paper here. We were provided with some documentation from the Bureau of Infectious Disease Control, as well as a document was extracted from the presentation to the Board of Education on October 13th. So this contained a chart regarding what model of education we should be in based on our local epidemiology. Is there someone from the district office who would like to take the lead on, lead into that?
I believe Lisa Jengres is here, and certainly Tara Consilla are very familiar with that. Can they address the...
Absolutely.
Is this on the agenda?
That's awesome. Yes. So transitioning between instructional modes and the Department of Education recommendations. I think we also have Ms. Constantino and Ms. Bagley in attendance as well from our local Department of Health. So I'm sure they will have some good information on that as well. So go ahead and shoot what we think this proposal should be.
I think we're going to defer to Ms. Bagley and to Ms. Constantino, and they can tell us where we stand today. I know that numbers did change over the weekend, so hopefully they can update us and let us know where we stand.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm just going to provide a little update on COVID-19. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to share my screen with everybody. So can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
So here's just a brief update on what we look like for COVID-19 in Nashua. So over the past two weeks, we have seen a significant increase in COVID activity. We're currently following 355 active cases and their associated contacts. This is a record for the highest number of cases and contacts that we've had in the city of Nashua throughout the entire pandemic. So we've had a total of 1,602 cases. 77% of those people are recovered, and then the rest have active illness. So if we look at the state community-level transmission metrics, so these are the metrics that the state uses to determine substantial community transmission. So they define community transmission by surpassing one out of three of these indicators that you see here. So the first indicator is the number of new cases per 100,000 over the past 14 days, and that tells us how quickly disease is occurring in the community. And this number is essentially the number of new cases divided by the population size to get a rate per 100,000 so we can compare across communities. And so we are at 421.9 new cases per 100,000. Last week, this number was about 170 new cases per 100,000. So this number has more than doubled in the past seven days. And then we have the new hospitalizations per 100,000, which tells us how quickly hospitals are being burdened by disease. And we remain fairly low with that number. We have about 4.5 per 100,000, but we're still in the minimal category for that number. And then the third number is the percent positivity rate, which has increased since last week from the minimal category to the moderate category. And this gives us an indication of how the general community at large is impacted by COVID-19. So in general, the higher the positivity rate, the more people that are testing positive, and we're at 6.9%. So if we look at the breakdown of Nashua cases by age, here we have the number of cases in Nashua per month from March to November by age, broken up into 0 to 4, 5 to 9, 10 to 14, and 15 to 19. So as you can see, the cases in these ages have gone up significantly, specifically in the 15 to 19 age group, followed then by the 10 to 14 age group. So we started to see this increase back in September, when students started playing sports and going out and about. And now we really see a large number of cases in people under the age of 19. And now we really see a large number of cases in people under the age of nineteen. In the first two weeks of November alone, we've had eighty-nine total cases in people under the age of nineteen. And sixty-three out of eighty-nine of those cases were in the fifteen to nineteen age group. That's on average about five positive cases a day in school-aged youth. So here are the contacts for people under the age of nineteen. So these are the people who have been quarantined for fourteen days due to exposure to a person who's tested positive for COVID-19. So in total, we've had a hundred and eighty-two people under nineteen that have been quarantined just in the first two weeks of November. That's eleven new quarantine students per day on average. So about eleven contacts per day and five positives per day, just in November and just in people under the age of nineteen. So what do these numbers tell us? So these numbers tell us that without the added risk of congregate setting exposure such as schools, we are already seeing a fairly significant burden of disease in youth. So if we add the layer of a congregate setting on top of that already burdened group, we're going to see an exponential growth of cases. So the reproductive number for COVID-19 without any intervention is two point five. So that means on average, every one case will infect two point five people. So that means that a cluster in one school, it starts with one sick person, that one sick person will infect two other people. And that can end up leading to sixty cases just from that one person, depending on the length and extent of exposure. So it's very possible that if the schools completely reopen, that we'll see a shift in the distribution of the burden of disease from the sixty-five-plus age group to the nineteen underage group, which is what happened in Massachusetts. And then Bobby, I don't know if you want to add anything to this piece here?
Sure, thank you. And so the R not, or that reproductive number that Angela is speaking of, is an average of two point five. And I'm sorry, I don't have my video on. I just finished a testing clinic, so I'm sitting in my car outside of the Elm Street parking garage. So you wouldn't see me in the dark in my car. But the, the R not is, would be typical of an average of two point five. So what we've actually been experiencing is a lot higher contacts and number of people that are becoming positive in households where there is a positive individual. And so the significance of understanding that two point five and the exponential rate of increase in positivity or cases is really important because without being in a congregate setting, that's what we would see. You throw in a congregate setting or being in the school setting where you have more interaction for longer periods of time, you have the opportunity for more exposure to additional students, faculty, and other staff. So that's the significance of understanding what that reproductive, reproductive number looks like if the situation changes. Angela?
Thanks, Bobby. So that's all I have for our update. So does anyone have any specific questions about the information that I presented?
Well, thank you, ladies both, and thank you for running right from work to get online. I appreciate that, Ms. Bagley. Good presentation, Angela.
I have a question.
Oh, yep, go ahead, Dottie.
On the packet we received, it said bicentennial school one, Broad Street Elementary School one. And I'm not sure if this is staff numbers or student numbers. I don't see Amherst Street listed here. And on October thirty-first, we got an email from Dr. Mosley that the Special Ed Intensive Needs Program at Amherst Street had been closed because of an outbreak of COVID-19. And the other day in our packet, we got a list of COVID-19 people in the district that listed eighty individuals. I don't know if they were students, staff. I think seventeen were teachers, seventeen were custodians, four were nurses, and, and a couple others. I, I don't understand what we're seeing and what we're not seeing. We're seeing different things from different pieces of, of paper that we're getting.
Yes, Ms. O'Gara?
Dottie, I have an update to the numbers from the last board packet. And it's the number of people who have been quarantined.
Quarantined, okay.
So that doesn't necessarily mean, that doesn't mean a confirmed case. It's someone who maybe had exposure or secondary exposure and are quarant, self-quarantining for safety.
The confirmed cases and the contacts were quarantined.
Now, let me ask, the incident or the outbreak that we heard about on October thirty-first, was that, that the program had to be closed down? Was that students or staff?
That was, you're talking about the Brentwood program?
No, it was Amherst Street School's special, intensive special ed program.
I think you meant Brentwood. Because it's on Amherst Street.
Well, I don't think they have an intensive special ed's program at Brentwood. I know they do at Amherst Street.
So there is a special ed program at Brentwood. It's not an intensive needs, but there is a program there.
Would you guys, would you be able to get that into our next board packet and clarify which program was having that hiccup?
For sure. So we think there's about four to six clusters that happen. I think Amherst Street had two clusters and I think Sunset Heights had one or two, and I think Brentwood did. So the, I think those that, that communication that you are receiving is like the clusters. So that's when a classroom has to go all remote because of all the contacts.
Well, wouldn't it be listed on the slide?
With the person or the child?
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be listed on this slide? The explanation of information, it lists Nashua North, Broad Street, and bicentennial? Wouldn't, wouldn't those schools be listed here?
Dottie, I really can't answer it because in HR, we are tracking the people, the number of people in our school district that have, that have had caught contact or COVID. So I can tell you those numbers. I think those other notifications are clusters in schools that have happened, that you get notified about. I think we're, we're working on getting that into a report and solidified.
That would be fantastic if you could get that a little bit more accurate and narrowed down and maybe specific data on whether they're quarantining because of contact or whether actually a confirmed case. I think that's really important. I think a lot of people are using the awesome community dashboard that, the Department of Health uses. And you can break it down by school and see that we've really had minimal cases that are actually tracked. It appears to be through the schools where the contract tracing, which is actually my question for Ms. Constantino or Ms. Bagley. Can you define for us, oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Dottie, I, I didn't.
Thank you.
And can you define for us the difference between a cluster and an outbreak and a case?
Sure. Go ahead, Angela.
So a case is just one case in time. A cluster is three cases that all have a link to each other. And then an outbreak is three or more cases that do not have the same identifiable link. So for example, if there are three cases in one classroom, that's a cluster. But if there are two cases in one classroom, two cases in another classroom, and then a fourth case in a third classroom, that's considered an outbreak because they're not all directly linked. So when you can't find that direct link, or it's three or more, then it's considered an outbreak versus just a cluster.
Thank you. I think that's really good to know that so we can, you know, know how to proceed. My follow-up question to that is maybe actually directed to the Ms., the nurses department. What practice are we putting into place right now? And I think it was, and I'm kind of wondering if the packet we have over here that you sent us is up from the State Nurses Association. If that's something that we need to approve specifically for the procedures for the Nashua School District with the calendar as an addendum to the calendar, or an appendix to the calendar? Or do you have a process in place that we're using currently in the student, for the students that are in school? If we find out that there is a teacher or a child that's been exposed to COVID? Or is this a tested case?
So I'm not sure what you're, what you're referencing. You're on mute.
I'm sorry, thank you. In our packet, there is a, it says the New Hampshire School Nurses Association from Paula McKinnon.
Yes.
Is that the documents that you are using or those recommendations that we're using in the schools for like the special ed kids that are in there right now?
Yes, we are, we are. Can I add something to bring me a conversation? So I knew this was coming about in, I, we've been working really closely with all the principals. I made a survey, I talked to all of the school nurses in the whole entire district to see exactly if there were any positive cases or how many positive cases they had for the hybrid students. And there's been very minimal. There's been a lot of, you know, parent-teacher communication, but there's only been five since we started hybrid, five actual positive cases of students that, you know, were hybrid and, and, you know, basically connected from a home base that they received it. But I was very surprised at the number, so it's very minimal for the kids. I mean, we have a lot of, you know, little pop-up cases throughout the district of, you know, teachers, parents, whoever. But Ms. O'Gara is the one that, you know, takes care of that. But the, the students, it's been very minimal.
That is so wonderful to hear.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. And it sounds like the nurses and the staff are doing a great job. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I'm so glad that you have a thorough plan in place. Do you feel like those cases, are they mostly bringing them in from other places? Or are they?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're not, they're not actively contracting them in schools typically?
Definitely not, no.
Thank you.
From like, you know, grandpa, whoever.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, what was, I think I had one more question, but I got to think about it for a minute. Ms. Oden, I didn't mean to cut you off there. Did you have a follow-up?
Oh, but thank you. And, and thank you for answering some of those questions.
Yes, and let's see, Mrs. Raymond, do you have a question?
I do. I also saw Janice Hand flashing there. Ms. O'Gara, so I'm not sure if she had a follow-up. So I guess I would like some assistance trying to figure out how we as a district and how parents and board members and other people who aren't epidemiologists and who maybe math isn't our strongest suit, can figure out on a day-to-day basis whether or not we ought to be moving between the models? Like, like, should we be in remote right now or should we be in hybrid? Should we be moving from one phase of hybrid to the next? Should we be backing up and going back to remote? Like, how can we help ourselves make those decisions? So like, I understand the criteria for the level of, I'm sorry, this is really small, the criteria of level of community transmission. That makes sense to me. And I can look right on the public health dashboard and see we're red and then I'm like, I don't want my kids in school. Right? But then, when I look at the suggestions from the New Hampshire Department of Public Health and the ones that have come down from the state, and we have this like nice grid, one, the big thing here is it's to look at the level of community transmission and the level of school impact. It's the school impact part that I'm really struggling with. Because when we look at a microcosm of our school, like in fall sports, we could see immediately, because there's not a lot of kids there, what was our impact on that sport? Do we need to move it or change it? And I know that Ms. Gingras or any coach could immediately say, okay, I have a kid who had a community exposure. We need to lock this team down for a little bit. We need to figure it out. That was easy. But our kids aren't in school. So how do we know what our level of school impact is? If we're, if we're not in school to be able to say, okay, it's time to go back to school. For me, let's be honest, three hundred and fifty cases in a day, my vote is not to send people into the schools at that point. But that might be fear-based as opposed to data-based. And I'm really struggling seeing the studies come out of Europe and other matrices saying that like community transmission isn't a big deal in schools and then not having anything to compare it to here. Like, for me, it would make my decision-making so much easier if we had something like what Massachusetts has, where I just look at the list, you know? Okay, it's cases per hundred thousand or over X number, we're not going hybrid. Or, you know what I mean? Or our staffing level is at X percent, so we're not going hybrid, or vice versa. I'm really struggling with, with explaining to my constituents why I'm voting the way I'm voting, except to say, well, it's the safest and I'm afraid. And that's, it's not a, a good explanation. So I kind of said a lot of words there. I guess what I'm saying is how do I know? Are there any recommendations for how we can figure that out? That would make it like easy for board members to just go to a chart that made more sense than this chart does.
Thank you very much, Ms. Raymond. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Bagley.
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't know if you can see my hand. But the, so the metrics that the state is using does have a criteria. And I, and I don't have it. I'm not sure if Angela, you have that screen that you could pull up? Or if somebody has that screen that they could pull up and you can see that it does have.
Actually, you know what? In our, I was going to say, Heather, in our packet, it's not the one, it's just the one pager from the transitions. It's this other one that actually does have two charts that attach to each other. I think it's actually, it might be not that one. That's the one on the page, there's another one. But go ahead. Do, is this what you were thinking about, Ms. Bagley?
Yeah, so that way we see that there's a metric there that shows once the percent positive rates get to a certain number, it shows you on the grid here when you would be concerned about moving back and forth from face-to-face, full, hybrid, or total remote. And so if you get more red in these different categories here where it says minimal, moderate, and substantial for the level of community transmission, that's what you want to focus on. And then that level of school impact up top, how does this level of community transmission impact that? So it's going to be how your whole system works, which will include your ability to have the staffing, which would be your teachers, your powers, your nursing, your individuals that would be driving your buses, folks that would be cleaning your school. So you're going to look at that level of school impact based on that. So from, so far, because the school is set up right now where you've got the hybrid is with your, your kindergartners and your first graders and your special ed, you've seen a lower number of kids that have been impacted. Because as you can even see from our data, that age group is not significantly impacted as of yet with COVID disease. But you can see that the higher age groups, ten to fourteen and fifteen to nineteen, we've had, especially in that fifteen to nineteen group, a, a huge increase in the number of positive cases. And that's with them being outside of school. So then you would look at, if they were in school, how would that impact the school? If you were having these clusters and two or more unrelated clusters in the school? And if those percentages went above the thirty percent, that's a high impacting, it's critical. If it went over fifteen to thirty percent, it's strained. So for right now, just with what we've seen, and I'll use Brentwood as an example. So with the Brentwood case, there was a positive case and then it had an impact on the number of contacts. And so if you have a certain number of contacts that have to go on quarantine, that's going to impact who's available to actually teach or provide the services to the students. So if those folks aren't there, then they go to. So if those folks aren't there, then they go to full remote, because there's nobody there to teach the students. So you have to look at it that way. And it might be school by school, grade by grade, because you would, you would look at the impact of, of the availability of people that are there that can actually run your classes for you, and then have the staff that's needed, you know, to be able to support everything that's going on in that system. So you're gonna need to have your nurses there, you're gonna need to have your custodians there, you're gonna need to have folks, so that that whole system works well together. So that's how you would look at the level of impact in your school.
Thank you, Ms. Bagley, I appreciate that. And I think that's the part we're struggling at. Brentwood was obvious, right? Because there are only so many people in that school. But when you look at our school district as a whole system, we have 200 teachers out, out of 1,500. So we're talking about, you know, significantly less than that, you know, 30% threshold. So
Right.
You know, so it's, it's difficult for, it's difficult to understand, based on those two charts and the data that we have as a system, why we wouldn't be coming up with some creative options to figure out how to, how to work that out. Now, again, my, my kids are home, we have, we have different decision-making matrices for my own house versus my board hat. And, and so there's some tension there. But it would be, it, it feels like when we started remote, like, there's no way, there's no path forward that allows for the kids to go back to school. And I'm not talking about between now, frankly, and mid-January. I don't think they should be back between now and mid-January. But I'm thinking ahead to the spring, especially as we send out these surveys that parents are gonna be thinking about this weekend. You know, when we're thinking about April, March, April, when hopefully numbers start going down again, haha. What's the path forward to getting the kids back? And if they feel like it's a, it's a mathematical impossibility or improbability, like, that'll affect their decision-making as well. And I don't see how we can, I just don't, I don't know how to come up with something that would be more intuitive, I guess.
So.
And I can't see everybody, so I don't know if anybody else is waving.
As, I was gonna say, I can see only have four people right now, but I'm gonna try to expand this out back out. Yes, Ms. Johnson, go ahead.
Got a lot of questions here. First of all, when we're talking cases, are these active cases or are these just cases that we've done testing on?
So the 355 is currently active cases who have tested positive.
Okay, active cases. So when somebody goes in and has a test done, is that considered a case?
No, that's considered a negative result, and they are not counted as a case.
Negative result, and they're not counted as a case?
Correct.
They're not counted as a case until it comes back positive, if it does?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now, let's see, the Brentwood, we had a positive case that impacted kids, and then we eventually had to shut it down, was that, and everybody went to remote, am I, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, let's see. So we've got the hybrid in the kindergarten and first grade and special ed. So are there known students in special eds over the age of the kindergarten and first graders that wouldn't be more susceptible, even with their immune system, some of them, to COVID-19? Does anybody understand my question?
No.
No, can you repeat that, please?
Sure. We've got kindergarteners in first grade, that's in this hybrid. Two half-days, am I correct? The hybrid. Then we have special ed students that range in ages, am I correct? Because they're just not first grader kindergartners, they're in all-age group, because they need to have that one-to-one setting. Okay? So, they could be from the age of five to 18, if need be. Does that mean, in that age range where they are, that they wouldn't be COVID susceptible? Because we're saying, between the ages of 15 and 19, there's that huge increase in positive cases. So we're saying that only the, so are we leaving out this group on special ed that could bring it into the schools and be positive? Also, where we don't wanna bring this other students in because of that age group from 15 to 19 is a huge increase in positive cases? Does anybody get my question now? My question is, we've got a group of kids from 15 to 19 and 10 to 14 that are special needs. Are we gonna say that they don't get COVID-19 at all, and they're in school, and they're not going to pass it on? Because those students are in school because they have to be one-on-one, but we won't bring anybody else in to do schooling? It doesn't make sense.
So, actually, Ms. Johnson, I kind of, my question was a little bit similar to that. We're seeing, we're, it's a little bit, a little bit different. So I see that the adolescent and youth transmission numbers are going up. I, I agree with Ms. Raymond, that right now is not the time to return to the classroom. I think we kind of missed our window for some really good learning. So we're gonna have to wait a little while for things to go back down. But we're seeing our adolescent youth transmission going up. The CDC put out this week also that the adolescent group is up 34% in their mental health emergency room visits from the same period last year. And it's like, one in three, or, you know, 33% is pretty substantial. But my, what I'm curious about is how are the kids in that age group contracting COVID? Are they in other activities outside of the classroom? Are they at social gatherings? Like, what's, how is it all of a sudden we're unable to control it as much, even though we're doing a good job controlling it in our schools for the kids that are in the classroom?
Um, yeah.
Go ahead, Angela.
So the majority of transmission right now is from contact to a known case. So a lot of these kids are either household contacts to a positive case, so mom and dad tested positive, the kids then exposed, and then develop illness themselves. Or we also have a lot of cases related to, you know, hockey, club hockey, youth sports, things like that, where kids are out in groups and then are exposed to one another, or exposed to coaches or parents outside of their circles, and then get illness that way. But the majority of transmission in the state right now is due to contact or direct case. And then other than that, it's community-based transmission, meaning there is no identified risk.
And then, and I'll just add to that, Ms. Brown. And so when you think about that 15 to 19-year-old age group, they're more independent. These are adolescents that can be involved in more outside activities outside of their home. Some of these youth may, may drive and have more social activities than you would find in the, the younger age groups. And so there might be more control of the younger kids, where the older ones may be out more. The 15 to 19-year-olds are also working. And so if they're in, uh, working in supermarkets, working in restaurants, working in part-time jobs in different types of facilities that put them in places where there is greater exposure for them, that's why you're gonna see the difference with that, that age group as well, because they're more independent and more opportunity for exposure in the community.
Thank you. Let's see, I think.
I, I just wanted to finish up my questions.
Oh, go ahead, Johnson, Ms. Johnson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you. So I just wanna elaborate on what Ms. Bagley said. Is that 15 to 19-year-olds, they might be out there working. Well, Nashville has an ordinance, so if you're working in Nashville, in any place in Nashville, or you're dining or anything, you have to wear the mask. I know I work in retail and I have to wear the mask. Okay, so that's Nashville's ordinance. So that kind of doesn't wash with me. Not unless they're working outside of Nashville, but I would probably venture to say, about students, they're probably working in Nashville, if they don't drive, the parents probably drop them off. So that, that doesn't resonate that much with me. And I'm hearing about, well, you know, our window of opportunity left. I think I was probably one of the only ones that thought about that when these students got back in school in September, get them in the classrooms now where the windows can be open, and they can have the fresh air, and they could be amongst their peers. The most important thing I think we're missing in this whole piece here, yes, COVID is a disease. It's, it's more than the flu, it's just as contagious as the flu. It's looking up on my iPad, flu versus COVID. Certain age groups like mine, I'm in that senior group, I'm more susceptible, I have immune issues, I work out there with a mask, and, you know, some people got upset with me the last time, but I'm gonna say it, I'm out there working. But what we're not looking at here either is the student psyche. We're not looking at the fact that they're not with their peers anymore. They're not in the classroom with their teachers that they need. And everybody forgets that, and I do a lot of reading. Suicide, depression, anxiety has gone up because these students aren't with their peers. And let's face it, we're human beings, some people don't like other people, some people do. But students are more social-based at this age, and we forgot about that. And masks can be mandated in those classrooms with everybody. So the ordinance says, if you're in a public building, you're in a supermarket, you're in a restaurant, any place public, you have to wear a mask. So if masks are effective, as they, everybody says, we have to wear masks, and there should be no reason why our students can't be in that classroom with a mask on. We're told that our HEPA filters are working great. They've been checked and rechecked, the cycle of the fresh air intake and everything is working great. I have a friend that said, that he testified in front of Congress, said that he'd be more than happy, no cost to the district to come in and make sure on top of everything that these filters, the HEPA filters and, and the intake. And, and I don't know anything about HVAC. He said he'd be more than happy to come in and do a double check to make sure everybody is safe in the buildings. But we keep forgetting about that. The learning piece, part of learning is social interaction with their peers. And if you read all the data, and they talk about lockdowns, that lockdown was supposed to cure everything, but there was a lot of suicide, a lot of depression, anxiety, abuse, alcoholism, drugs. That's not good for anybody. And then I'm reading about immunization. Well, we're talking about COVID-19, we're not talking about the flu. So, you know, the question I guess here now is gonna be, if someone takes a flu shot or is coming down with a cold, does your testing pick that up, or would it come back COVID-19?
I guess, Ms. Constantino, is that if we take a COVID test, we confirm that it's not mistaken for another virus?
Yeah, so the, the PCR COVID-19 test is highly specific and sensitive. So up to 95% specific, 9% sensitive, which means that false positives are very unlikely, and false negatives are a little bit more possible, but less likely, and that depends more on the time that you do the test. So the test is accurate, but it doesn't have anything to do with any other illness other than COVID-19.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, I'm gonna kind of bundle this, getting us back to our agenda. I wanna bundle transitioning between instructional modes by the DOE combined with metric slides from the super PowerPoint on 10/13/20. So that's actually what I was using as what I thought that the district was proposing for their metric system for transitioning between instructional modes. And so I, this is kind of dumb for me to hold this up here. Is there a chance that, Ms. Consella, you have that, that you could bring that up? I apologize. I know, and it's got a lot of really tiny writing on it. Do most of the members that are here this evening have this document in front of them? Or something close to it? Unless there was someone from the district office tonight that was going to propose using a different method than the one from this matrix? Yeah, that's what I've got, Heather. So this one, the difference between what I see in this matrix compared to the one directly from the DOE, is that right? Is that I think the slots actually reflect one another. It tells us pretty specifically which section you're in based on, based on the bottom, the bottom criteria is what your top criteria is based, is, will move into. Is that's accurate, correct? And is there any reason why that should? Is that, the impression I got is that this is the district office's proposal for what we should use as our decision matrix? Is that an accurate statement? And I can only see some, so please feel free to shout out or use the chat feature.
Ms. Brown, may I jump in?
Yes, please, Ms. Jengris.
So we worked on this this summer and into the fall, and these slides are directly taken from the New Hampshire DOE document. They're the exact same things. So the chart that's on the bottom of the slide that Tara's showing right now helps define and let you know which column you're in. So whether or not you're in minimal, moderate, or substantial level of community transmission, that's, that, the white and gray at the bottom helps you decide what column. Tara, can you go up one slide? This chart then decides which row you're in. So this is the level of school impact. So there's two sets of criteria that you have to decide which row and which column am I in? And then you look at the intersection of those two. But this information in this, in Dr. Mosley's PowerPoint, is the exact same information from the Department of DOE document.
It's just, all right, so we're talking, so it's just displayed in a different, on different slides, different separate spaces.
Yeah, it's just understanding how to get to which cell.
So what is the perspective of the, what is the, is there a consensus of our pantheon of awesome principals? Or, and you, Ms. Jengris, what? If this is, if this is a good methodology on what we should use moving forward? So the one specific thing that we asked for in here was a clear numbers-based decision matrix for which method of education we should be in moving forward with these calendars. I mean, I can go download one from another school district, if it would be easier to read, or if you think this is what we should use, or do you think this is to, is everything in here still, still subjective? Is there ever a point where we have, is there, is there something, I don't know, give me your opinions? And again, I can't see you, please use the chat function or just shout out.
Can I shout out?
Do you want me to take down the, the graphics so you can see people?
Yeah, yeah, I guess, no, everybody has in front of them what we're looking at, so that will be fine. Thank you, Tara.
You're welcome. So I was gonna ask if I could shout out. I think this is what the board has been trying to get at since August. Is that Nashville's unique, I mean, we have our own COVID-19 dashboard, we have our own Nashville Public Health Department, because what's happening in Nashville is not necessarily reflective of what's happening in the rest of the state. So the state guidelines are meant for the state, but we're not Coas County, right? So we have things that are influencing us in a different way, and we've been in the red significantly longer than everywhere else. So knowing that, the board has been wanting and asking for what makes sense for Nashville to use. Other districts have made what makes sense for their district. We wanna know what makes sense for Nashville that incorporates what the state has given as like our general guidelines, but what's, what's best for Nashville? Just like, we're asking you guys for, you know, what's the best remote plan for Nashville versus Hudson or Hollis, because we're very different than our neighbors. So I guess that's kind of still where we get hung up on it, and we're spending three hours on a board meeting going round and about, because we clearly, as a nine-member team, don't understand how to apply this to our unique circumstances that are different than ever. to our unique circumstances that are different than everywhere else in the state. So if there's a way to dumb it down, now, I'm, for me at least, that would be super helpful.
That would be great. Yeah, Ms. Consella?
So I think that what we have talked about as a district is that exact chart because it, it's really a two-factor chart, epidemiology and staffing. And the top part brings you down into the epidemiology of what our numbers are as far as where the city of Nashua is. And the side component brings you over as to what is our staffing impact right now. And that's really what guides you and that's what I believe Dr. Mosley has been inferring is we have to look at those two pieces. And I think the principals actually can speak to the staffing component for their individual schools because it's gonna vary from one school to another, one day to another on how that works. So I can segue to them, Mike, I see your hand, so if that's.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mahoney.
The first thing I would think of is the numbers from the health department. When you are at 455 per 100,000 and that automatically slides you into the red as being substantial, I think that's the first thing you need to consider. Especially when you compare it to when this whole thing first started, it looks like it's worse. So like you said earlier, Ms. Brown, this is not the time to, you know, to go right back in when, when things aren't, aren't so good. And that's why when we proposed that we would take that break after Thanksgiving, not a break, I'm sorry, remote learning after Thanksgiving until a certain date. And I know you, you have to consider now at this point, moving forward, are you going to just stay remote straight through the holidays like some towns are doing? Are you gonna send the kids back in for eight days in between holidays? That's something for you to consider. The second part obviously is the staffing. And there's a couple of things that we can see how many people are positive cases or how many people are gonna put in for leave that we don't even know about yet. But the other piece is that we have staff members that are not available and are not sick and are not positive because they are quarantined and they don't show up on a chart anywhere. So when you look at the numbers in that way, I mean, I know of many cases in my building over the past couple of days where immediate family members are positive, so now my staff member has to quarantine and now I'm down three staff members and they don't even count as cases. So it just really magnifies what it is we're up against from a staffing standpoint, that's all.
Thank you, I think that's good, go ahead, Mr. Richard.
Sorry, again, I think it would be working with Department of Health of the Epidemiology piece and just to jump off what Mike said, staffing. I think why, you know, we want to look at the start of second semester, get the survey out. And if we have a start, a set date that says we're starting on this day, that will also give time for any staff member that's gonna be applying for leave. And then I think we're, we are gonna use all of our resources that we have available to fill those classrooms to make sure there's supervision for those students when we return. And we have been talking about this, I'm talking about with Mr. Burns and our admin team is I think there will be a breaking point where we might not be able to open in the morning. On top of just COVID-related absences, we have normal absences. We have a substitute shortage where we often would have, you know, 10 to 15 people out on a weekday and 10 classes that were unsupervised in a, last year where health was not a major issue. So I think I would like to start planning, use all our resources to fill the classrooms that I know teachers will be out on leave. But then I think there is gonna be a, that we're gonna have to come up with a procedure that says if I wake up at six in the morning and check our, our absent log and I have 10 classes that are unsupervised, I might have to cancel school that day or go remote because of those staffing things. And that's where I'm getting concerned that it might be a day-to-day thing when we combine normal illness, normal doctor's appointments, normal things, personal days with the COVID-related issues. That's why we have to get the staffing thing under control or figure it out, not under control, but we need to use all our resources to be prepared when that first day is, and then I think we have to, and that might be each school will have to come up with their own breaking point where it's gonna have to be a remote day. And that might be different for a high school versus a middle school versus an elementary school because there's only so many spots that we can put kids when we don't have a classroom covered.
To go to Mr. Richard's point, we have to start, we have to start with the leaves before we can get to the day-to-day piece, because the day-to-day pieces are gonna happen in, in an instant, in a moment. But as it stands now, we have a few people at each of the schools that have already indicated they might take an ADA leave or an FMLA leave. There's quite a few of those outliers out there that haven't shown their face and it, for a particular reason. I think at least the particular reason that I can find is that we don't have a firm date because it's a constant moving target of when we're deciding, okay, we, this is when we are planning to go back into hybrid and kids are gonna come in the building. Once we can firmly set that date, how we're gonna do that, I'm not quite sure. We'll draw out more people to say, you know, I've made the decision, I can't do it. And we can get a bigger picture of where we stand on just the leaves. Then we can start building a potential schedule and then we can fill in on those day-to-day immediate pieces. And as Mr. Richard said, we might not be able to fill in those, those pieces, might have to do a remote day on a random Wednesday or random Thursday. But we have to start, we have to start to nail down those things that are definite. And those definites are ADA leaves, FMLA leaves, and EFMLA leaves. We have to knock down a date that we're gonna agree upon to start so we can draw those people out.
I appreciate that, you being so direct, thank you gentlemen. Yes, Ms. Reiman?
Thanks, so I guess, I guess at this point we're relying on you guys for the date because to this point it has been my experience that every time we have a date, we as the board are told we don't have staffing to start that date and to push it out. So we haven't been able to establish a date to pull the trigger to find out where we're at, which can be very frustrating, I think, to parents and to board members to not to just, you know, we've started the year with, we need extra time to do PPE and then it was, we need extra time for staffing and now it's too late to go into in-person. And I guess I, I worry that we're never gonna get out of remote. Which I worry about the the academic excellence that our families and students are used to. And I worry about our single parents and our families and our kids who remote learning isn't really working for as well as we would like, you know. And I don't know what the, and I worry about all of our kids' mental health. You know, we're all getting creative as parents, but there's only so much we can do when all of our kids are essentially grounded at home for eight months now. So so I don't, I don't expect the school to solve all these problems, but.
That's a tall order.
Can I just jump into about the staffing and kind of something to what Ms. Raymond just said is, you know, I think it's important too to note that, you know, teachers are doing an excellent job right now, reaching their students, they're, you know, working hard from home. Kids are getting to see their teachers four days a week, plus their office hours on Friday and really connecting with kids. And I think it's important to note too, so at the two high schools, for example, Keith and I each have, you know, four science positions open. And right now we have one applicant for those four positions between the two schools. So, you know, if we're gonna be putting, and the other teachers have been approved for ADA or FMLA and if they're gonna be teaching remotely from home, you know, they're not, those students that are in the building are not gonna have a certified teacher in front of them. And, you know, hopefully we can put a substitute in there. But we can't do that over a certain number of days. You know, they've got to be certified for us to be able to hire them. So I think it's really important that, that parents also understand that right now you've got a certified teacher working with your kids on a daily basis, giving them high-quality instruction versus, you know, maybe having a body in the classroom with a teacher teaching remotely into the, into the room, not able to work with their kid in person and not able to really support them there. So it adds, you know, other layers and things that we haven't really, you know, had an opportunity to discuss, but.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I want to be very clear, I, I think the teachers are doing a fantastic job. All of my children's, all of their teachers and everybody I know has had nothing but great things to say about the teachers. So please don't take any of our feelings of confusion and frustration about the systemic issues that are facing every single person in the country right now as any type of criticism about what the teachers and the staff and people are doing. Because I know that the amount of work that my kids' teachers are doing is much, I mean, I know it takes them late into the night to come up with creative ways to engage. Like, it has to because it's brilliant, so please don't take that as a, as a criticism. So.
I think that, I think you hit the nail on the head, Heather, I don't, I think everyone on this board is here in this committee and also on the board is very supportive of our teachers and knows that they're out there doing their best for our kids every day and we put our, you know, their education in their hands. So thank you for the work you do. Alright, so I don't wanna, I really like this feedback that we have from the principals right now. And I think I'm prepared to make some motions, I think we need to make some movement on this calendar so that we can get some specific motions made and there might be some corresponding edits that we need to make to those motions. But I think some of that's gonna be relevant regarding our staffing issues for synchronous learning. We've only got dear Mr. Rodriguez here for a few more minutes. So if we could shift that talk over there to his direction for a few questions on that, then we're gonna come back and I'd like to maybe make some motions on the calendar because I feel like we're in a chicken and egg scenario, we need a start date so that we can get the staffing. And you know, if you build it, they will come. So, we're hopefully. Anyway, so Mr. Rodriguez, I'm gonna actually shoot first with this. For talking about moving forward, having the ability for teachers to be able to work either remotely from their classroom or live from their classroom or remotely. I wanted to confirm that the computers we got for everyone in the district are, will be here in time for the beginning of, be here for January?
Yes, yeah, the, the, the computers that we're getting, they were ordered, it was placed last week. These are gonna be for staff and teachers mostly. So they will have the ability to teach from their classrooms on network or if they choose to at home. They're gonna be equipped with laptops and web games.
Excellent, and those, so, and those all have, well, I mean, I'm sitting pretty far away from my computer right now. So that'll have pretty, they're upgraded from the Chromebooks. Also about the bandwidth from the concept of having multiple machines on the computer, and I think you did confirm with this. It's gonna have like 2,000, like streaming points from the elementary school classrooms and then more from the high school or something?
Yeah, it's actually need the entire district. So we, we quadrupled our internet bandwidth from two gigabits to eight gigabits. So we should comfortably, the reason why this is the streaming ability. So we should be able to comfortably handle any load on the district.
Awesome, way to go, good design, done, good job.
I have a very good team.
Very good. I guess, does anyone else have a question for Greg regarding something along those lines? Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, so let's say we set maybe January 4th and everything goes okay and we've got teachers to go in the classroom. Will you be able to be up and ready to go with that?
Yeah, ideally, you know, as, as anything, you know, God laughs at clients. So we have, we plan accordingly and we're confident we'll get the laptops in and running. We're, we're working on strategies to enroll them quickly and manage them through the cloud. So our turnaround time will, it, it will be as quick as possible. So that's, I don't want to give any definite dates and timelines just because it is IT and you do run into snags every once in a while.
So hypothetically, just a, just a date throwing out there, so, okay, thank you.
Okay, I didn't want to give a comfortable date.
Yeah, that's okay, I'm just kind of throwing a date out there just to kind of say that if we put, let's say we said the 4th, but you needed to the 10th, you know, that's one thing. But if we said the 4th and you said I need it to March 10th, that's another thing. So hopefully, right after the new year.
Yeah, we understand the money that we, that we're purchasing these, they're supposed to be in hand, in use by December 30th. So we, our, our buyer who purchases the laptops with HP understands this timeline and we understand the timeline to get these devices in there. So we do recognize that there is quite a time crunch.
Okay, so hopefully after the holiday vacation, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you so much for that and I really appreciate you, you know, that money that came in kind of, it had to be use it or lose it situation, I appreciate you moving on that so quickly. I just have one more question and then if everyone else is fine, I'll such a free. The question about, I know they're doing it in some neighboring districts, but I don't know how our, in the same way I have to do some policy, our tech policy works with streaming from classrooms. Is, is that an issue as long as it's not recorded?
Yes, I don't, we don't, right now we don't allow the recording of any sessions. Yeah, I know that was a question from middle school principals and high school principal, actually all principals. So we, we don't allow, because it, it's too much of an ask for permission to do that, so.
Okay.
If one descends, then.
So would that make synchronous learning with a student who was maybe self-quarantining or a teacher who was self-quarantining with a parent in the classroom, would that make that impossible using our current rules? Or would, do we have to edit those in any way to move forward?
I can't speak to that, that would have to be something that I want to defer to principals and teachers. Because I, you know, we, we stand up the technology, it's up to the staff and building administrators to, you know, work on curriculum and stuff like that. So I don't want, I don't really get too much into that, I don't want to speak.
Excellent, no, I appreciate that and that's why we're talking about, and curriculum is saying, hey, how are we gonna distribute this vast amount of knowledge we have over here? Alright, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, just one last question. When they're streaming, they will, they can't, it can't be hacked into by any outside forces and try to take over anything, the classrooms or anything?
Are you talking about like Zoom bombing or anything like?
Yeah, and all that, yeah, and all that stuff.
They do, they, they stream now, so it would be, it would fall under the same principles. What they, you know, we do send out, we have sent out guidelines and from what I understand, I don't want to speak for, you know, and the knock on wood, but you know, it seems like it's calmed down quite a bit. We, I haven't heard of this in the case in since the beginning, so I know, I spoke with WMUR about this and and it has since calmed down after that, but I, you know, who knows? Who knows what else can happen, so.
We don't want anything to happen, that's.
I don't want anything nefarious to happen either because it makes for an uncomfortable situation for teachers and students and then it eventually rolls down the hill path, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, does anyone else have a question for Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Raymond, are you all set? Okay, thank you very much, yeah, Greg, we appreciate you being here for us.
Alright, take care.
Alright, so that was really good information to know because I think that we do need to obviously double-check our policies and this is kind of, I guess, something that I'd like an opinion panel from the principals on. If we have a situation where a teacher or a student does need to move from the classroom to a remote situation, you know, we can have a building sub come in and float in for the day or a parent come and make sure those kids are safe in the classroom. Is there ways that you can allow teachers to work remotely and still allow students in the building in a situation, like would that help some of your staffing issues? Or would that make it worse?
I think it's something that, you know, would definitely help if we, but we still need a body within the classroom. So, you know, as to Keith, what Keith was saying earlier, there's days where we have, you know, 10 uncovered classes because we don't have subs. I mean, if we, right now, we hired four daily subs, that came from my, my east building, that came from my typical sub pool. So typically those, those subs. That came from my, uh, buddy's building. That came from my typical sub pool. So typically those T, those subs that we had last year were coming in Monday through Thursday. Now I, I get a fifth day out of them, but I'm not, I didn't really gain any net subs, um, for that. So I think it's one of those things that you need to, you need to have a body in there to supervise these kids. So if a teacher's home streaming in, that's great. And you have a teacher or, or an individual monitoring the classroom to make sure that their safety, I think that's a wonderful thing. But, um, my concern would be, you know, like Keith said earlier, if we have, you know, fifteen people out and then, um, not enough subs or not enough coverage, we're gonna still have to make that call to say it's not safe to, to hold school in person on that given day.
Alright, and is that something, oh, go ahead, Mr. Richard.
Yeah, just to jump off what Mr. Burns said, I think that's what I'm planning for, to be honest with you. Worst case scenario is that we're gonna, for our teachers that are gonna be out on ADA or in leave, um, we can't scramble those kids' schedules to get into the classes. Those teachers are gonna continue to teach remotely. And I think we're gonna have to find the best way we can for them to zoom in, somehow stream into the classroom with an adult in there, uh, to be honest. I think that would, is going to be the easiest way for us to. The board says we're opening January twenty seventh. Um, I'll be honest, that's probably the way we are gonna plan to, uh, staff our classes with the teachers that are on leave is to find subs as best we can to be in there to open up a streaming link for the students that are in the building.
Excellent. Um, so kind of regarding that, I think that's a, a good plan. I'm glad you're considering it. Is this, are we in a situation where we need to call over to send us some information over to finance or to HR in order to hire specific building subs? I mean, the event, advantage you have to a building sub that could be in a room while a teacher, a subject matter teacher is teaching at home, is that, um, you know, they don't, they're not under the same rules for a particular planning period and that kind of thing. So they can actually sub for different classes during the same day, correct? Is that, I, that's how I believe it works. My other question is, is there ever any bit of incentives to, um, for teachers to sub for their own subject matter class? If you've got a math teacher, can she be paid during her planning period to sub during it for another class? Is that an option? Oh, go ahead, uh, Ms. O'Gara.
That's a contractual issue that we, we would have to talk to the union for teachers to work on their planning period. Right now, we have four permanent billing subs at each of the two high schools. Uh, I forget what else, you asked something else, I'm sorry.
In- incentivizing, I, I would, I don't want to ask a teacher to teach during their pay, during their, during their planning period. It would be, you know.
It would have, yeah, we'd, like overtime. Yeah, we would have an understanding with the union about that before we did that.
Alright, um, if, anyways, well, that, for the board members present tonight, put that on the back of your mind for possibly things that we could send over to. I feel like hiring more subs would probably fall under finance, you know, the, whether we can afford it or not. So, go ahead, Ms. O'Gara.
Let's remember, so the building subs, the same rate as the per diem subs do during the pandemic. Then we, in finance, we raise the rate to a hundred and fifteen dollars, uh, a day. And that's what a building sub makes. The difference is that the building sub is a permanent sub. And so they're working regularly and they can have health insurance. That's the bonus.
That's, that's a good bonus. Um, alright, well, maybe there's some other ways and that we could also incentivize that more. Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah, some of the things that Mr. Richard was talking on are more secondary school based as far as covering the math class with a math teacher. You know, six-year-olds and five-year-olds are not gonna do well in front of a laptop without a body in the room. And to find a body in the room at an elementary school, we're now taking parent support from special ed students in order to cover that. So, so yeah, it is a staffing issue in that regard too.
Thank you. Um, alright, well, I think I would like to make a few motions, um, on the principal's schedule. I'm just trying to decide which order to make them in. There's a few edits that I would like to change for the words here. And I think they are still contingent upon having a, because I think it's going in the right direction. And I'm glad, I think you guys have done a great job and have very sound reasoning for what you, for, a close between now and, um, the beginning of the year. I think the switch is gonna be too hard to flip. I'm disappointed that we still don't have good metric data to use unless, can I get a sense of, do any of the board members here think that we should be using just the straight version of this? Or do you want to direct the superintendent's office to get a Nashua-specific matrix before the November meeting? Do I have a feeling on that? Go ahead, Heather.
Um, I'm sorry, are you saying that we should at the November meeting, vote on asking the superintendent's office to create a natural, Nashua matrix and get it to us by a certain date? Because there's only
I know.
A week? I mean, really, because Thanksgiving doesn't count.
Yeah, um, yeah, I think we need to, because we can't, we can't move forward for what kind of version of school we're gonna do if we don't have, if we don't know, have a reason to do it. And we can't pass account. I mean, I feel like we're really stuck in a circle here. There's no, there's, we still have no metric data that we, it's been approved to say, hey, yeah, we should all be remote, or yeah, we should have some kids in person. Um, I feel, we still have, it's com- it still has nothing that's based in anything other than our feelings of whether we feel good about it or not. And I think that's not ideal. I'm happy to say we just approve the state. Actually, I'll make that motion. I move to approve the data matrices put out by the New Hampshire Division of Public Health Services, um, connected with the level of community transmission in relationship to the level of impact on our school as a guiding document moving forward. And I would like to edit that motion to say I moved to recommend to the board.
Oh, great. I seconded.
That seconded by Heather Raymond and Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, I'm having a little bit of problem with this because, you know, we're I've said from the beginning, and even with this survey that's gonna go out, this poll, poll, survey, whatever you want to call it, we're just showing one piece of, of the puzzle here. We're not getting into consideration. And if we would have at the beginning, would have, should have, and we did not, I don't like to say didn't because my husband laughs at me with my New York accent there. We did not bring in people that should have been part of this whole committees. The reopening committee. We should have had more parents and more teachers input on all this to see what was working, what wasn't working with remote. And again, I asked when we were talking about putting together like your recommendation, Ms. Brown, on the pandemic committee. The superintendent wasn't happy and he didn't want to send anybody in from administration. And it would have kind of, and, and also, we're sitting here with boxes. And I also had said, if we could get into our boardroom and social distance with masks, to sit around and really hash this out one-on-one talking about this. I've got fifty million pieces of paper here that I'm going through each and every, trying to figure out which calendar we're going to vote on. Is it the yellow calendar here? Is it this calendar over here? I mean, we've got so many papers on so much stuff that we had one point over mode, then we had two point over mode, then we're going into three point over mode that we have board members trying to keep up with all these point O's on remotes and calendars and everything that parents don't even know what's going on here. And I really wanted this opened up for the community input here to hear what the parents have to say. So we all hear about the remote, we all hear about what's going on with the students here. And yet, we're still in these little boxes, I hate to say Hollywood squares here, but we're in the boxes here trying to get things done. And mountains and mountains of papers here, then I don't even know which calendar we're going to be talking about. I think that the state and the city is totally different, but I think if the state a matrix is better for the community to have more kids to try to get them back into school, I'd use the state. If the city's matrix would be better to get the kids back into school, I'd use the cities. I mean, I'm looking at the cases, I'm looking what's happening here. And, um, and the, the one thing I'm really looking at is these poor kids. They're in this tug of war here. We're pulling at them and deciding which is going to be the best. And if we don't give the parents that opportunity to come to the table and say which is gonna be best and when are we gonna open up the schools? I mean, by the time we're talking here, we'll be lucky if the seniors get back into schools at all. I don't hear any concrete plan really. And I know we've had teachers issue even before this. We couldn't find teachers, there's no credential teachers out there. I don't know why. I don't get it. But now, we don't even have these kids, these seniors, even though we worked high school down, I can't see when these kids are gonna get back into school. I really can't. I, it's just one excuse after the other, after the other. We're not listening to parents, we're not doing what we should be doing. We're not even giving them a chance where communities have opened up and has been successful. We never even tried to give that success there. We just wanted to remote and just filtering a little bit of hybrid here and there. Just first kindergarten, first graders, and that's it. And we pulled the plug on everything. So we never even gave them a chance to get these students back into school. So, um, I'm just really annoyed with this, this whole thing. I just feel that every time I come to meetings, where's the full board or the committee meetings, I don't feel that we get any closer to getting to what these students need. It's ju- everything's just getting pushed off. We hear the same things over and over again, the same bunch of papers. That's a waste. We're cutting down all these trees and we're wasting all this papers and we're getting nowhere. It's the same thing over and over again. No place. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I mean, I do agree that, I agree that this is not ideal, but it's the one we've been presented tonight. So I think it's what we're gonna have to vote on. And if we want to vote it down, that's fine. But I would recommend then we move to the next step to, um, direct the district to create something more Nashua-specific. We could amend the motion to add on that, um, we will use this matrix until a new one can be, uh, formalized and approved. If that is the will of the board. Ms. Odin, do you have anything to weigh in on this? Any chance?
I'm sorry, uh, it, it seems obvious to me that, uh, the high school is more of a challenge for going back. Probably the middle school too. I, I, I am still concerned about the numbers. We all see them going up. More school districts are closing until mid-January. I still worry about our primary students who have to learn to read some number sense. But I see the real challenge is for our high schools and primarily them and then our middle schools. I think the elementary schools, I don't know where the staffing is. But I think that might be an easier situation to deal with, but absolutely, the, the high school is more of a challenge. I, I would ask, Dana, do you know if anybody has contacted the state to see if they will give any temporary certification? We have Riviera University, we have, uh, the tech school over on Amher Street. Uh, graduate students, we have companies around here with very highly educated people. Has anybody contacted the state to see if they're willing to temporarily certify people during the pandemic?
Well, Dottie, I don't think they temporarily certify people. They do have emergency authorizations for some people. And there are all plans. So we reach out to them. What, if, if a principal will call me and say I have this candidate, they're not certified, is there anything that we can do? And then we go and we call the state and we find out if there's a, some way that we can get the person in there and under, usually it's under EA emergency authen- authorization. Are we gonna be able to do that for the hundred and twelve people, teachers, that, um, need to be in person for the ADA teachers? I don't think so. But we might make a little headway with that. But it's really, there, there's some minimum requirements, you know, about a bachelor's degree. You have to have that. And all the all-plan stuff has varying criteria. Like if you, we need a ELL teacher, it's gotta be somebody who has a language acquisition class and has a foreign language. So there are, there, we can work, but it's, it's very, it's not gonna, we're not gonna win the day.
Okay, um, also, what, I, I, I think of biochemistry, some of those very, uh, specific courses where you have to be, uh, uh, highly educated for the. If we had a, a biotechnology course at North and one at South and we only had one teacher, could we combine North and South so that one teacher could teach all of those students?
That, I think that's, uh, something that Mr. Richard or Mr. Burns might wanna answer.
I would say any options on the table, if it's gonna be, you know, teaching students, it's just looking at the schedule if it were to match up. I think it's just very difficult for that to happen. But if it did, I, we have teachers that go between our buildings already. I would see it being a practice that we already have. So, Mr. Burns?
I'd agree. I think, you know, it depends too on the number of students. So if we're combining, if it's lined up at the same, um, same block, teachers are limited as far as the number of students that they can have in a class at a time. So that'd be something we'd have to take into consideration as well, or we'd have to pay old bridges.
Okay, but you could consider something like that, especially for some of these courses. I know some of these courses are very hard to find certified teachers for.
Definitely. And we have two biotech ones right now at North and No Applicants, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, Ms. Odin. Um, alright, uh, Heather, do you have any remarks regarding adopting this data matrix?
I think it's our data matrix by default unless we adopt a different one. But I don't see any problems with moving it forward. So, there's that.
Alright, I think then, um, alright, so I'll call the vote. Ms. Johnson, no. Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, yes.
And, uh, Jessica Brown votes yes. We will recommend this as our approved data matrix for the board. Alright, that said, the next thing I think we should talk about is actually the calendar. So, I, if it's okay with the remainder of the board or with the rest of the, uh, committee members, um, I would like to look at this version, which is white paper with some blue block offs. Um, the other version we got in our packet suggested by the district is a, on yellow paper. Does anyone have a preference to start? Uh, I'll start. We're gonna go with the white one unless, Heather, go ahead.
I guess I would just, wait, can you hear me? I guess I would just like to propose that we move to stay, that we recommend to the full board that we simply stay fully remote until Tuesday, the nineteenth. Right? And then at that point, we look at our decision tracks and decide if we should be initiating hybrid classes at that point, or if we should be, as per the principals, they have like a, a breakdown. Or if we should continue remote at that point.
So I would say, if you'd like to make that motion, is that a motion or do you want to talk about it? Okay, so you move, you move to stay, uh, in hybrid until Okay, so you move, you move to stay in hybrid until the nineteenth?
No, remote.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, move, stay remote until the nineteenth. Um, I did hold on.
January.
Of January, and then at that point, make the decision whether to move back into the classroom.
I, we probably have to make the decision prior to that date, but my suggestion would be to initiate hybrid unless our decision matrix sees. Matrix, I'm not good. Says not to.
And hold on one moment, I also would like to add some language, I did talk to Marsha Bagley on this afternoon. And. She would like to edit any motions we make to make sure that all students who have, we have, she said she had four full days. She's got some students that are coming into the school for full days a week and. In accordance with Executive Order sixty-four, and she recognizes that those students will be remote for two weeks after each. Break, but she would like the students to, that have been in school settings and receiving services. To return to the school settings between December fourteenth and December twenty-first.
Okay, so, let me say it nicely, so the, the motion is to recommend the full board. That the board. Uh, keep all students remote. Until January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, with the exception of the students. Uh, who receive services pursuant to Executive Order sixty-four for the week of December fourteenth. Those students only will continue to receive their services. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay, did you get it Tara?
I think so.
Okay.
I think I've got a pretty good handle on it, I think I can type it up after. The, so I will second for the purpose of discussion. Yes, Ms. Johnson.
So, we're doing this two extra weeks, is that because of the holiday, because people might be traveling?
Yes, we have, in my opinion, yes, I made the motion because we have ten thousand something students. And fifteen hundred staff, only a thousand teachers though, apparently. Who may be traveling, maybe having holiday gatherings, I just don't know what people have planned, and I would rather err on the safe side.
I'm not going to support that because that means when we come into winter break in February, we're going to lose a week after that also. So that means winter break is from the twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, so that means we're going to have to do fourteen days, that means we won't be doing anything to the fifteenth of March. And then when we go into April break, starts on the twenty-sixth. And it goes to the thirtieth, so that means we're going to have to do two weeks on that, so that means we wouldn't get back, if we were back in school until the seventeenth of May. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna support this, I think these kids are going to be out more than they're going to be in. What is, what's the point of even talking about them trying to even get back into school hybrid or even full-time? I mean, they're going to be out more than they're in, so I'm not going to support that.
Okay, so, I actually don't necessarily support this motion the way it's worded, I support, I think that we should. Go ahead, I think it's going to be too, too difficult to pivot and start kids back into school before. Martin Luther King Day and perhaps even the semester change for the high school.
Is that not Martin Luther King Day?
I think they, is it the twenty-sixth, gentlemen? The semester, the new semester break? Maybe?
It's the twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Twenty-seventh, so yeah, so maybe that would be, oh, it says right here, sorry, I just looked over it. It seems like a more logical pivot.
That's only for high school.
For the high school.
Elementary and middle schools have trimesters.
Yeah, so I think the MLK Day makes sense for those kids. And for, or coming back after that and allow us for a proper quarantine period for anybody who needs that. However, what I, I think we should go ahead and have. I think we should accept the calendar, but I'd like to make a few edits to the calendar to change anywhere that it says hybrid to in-person. We can work later to determine that what definition of in-person learning means. As we move forward over the next couple of weeks here, but. I think if we do hybrid, that assumes that the current hybrid model is what we're using, and I think that. That needs some work perhaps in our next curriculum meeting and several meetings after that. So, I'd like the direction that the principal's schedule is heading to January. But since we just approved the metrics, we know if it's not safe, if we're in the red zone, we're not going back to school. And the parents can just look at that and say, hey, look, if we're at. The. Yeah, if we're, if we're in the red zone, we're still remote even after that point, if we're in one of the other zones, we can go into the school. But I think we should just ask the term hybrid and use the word in-person. So, unless we edit the calendar itself, I don't like.
Can we do that, just simply starting on Martin Luther King Day, the nineteenth? Can we just say remote until the nineteenth and then, starting on the nineteenth, we'll adopt the principal's calendar? Does that do the same?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, well, that's, that's what the principal's calendar says, excluding those folks that were suggested by it. More learning, hybrid, pre-K, actually, that is the principal's calendar, they actually even have the hybrid for the special needs.
And I would just keep the, everybody else who doesn't need to be there remote that middle week of December, because I don't see case numbers going down.
Nope, I think that's, that's acceptable to me. And then on January nineteenth, in accordance with our guidelines. Or, and twenty, and I would probably say. High school principals, would it be easier for your kids to transition at the twenty-seventh as opposed to the nineteenth?
Yeah, definitely, we have, I think, if you're bringing kids in for three or four days to prep for finals and, and change everything going on right at the end of the semester. I think that could be disastrous for a lot of our kids.
So, and for middle school principals, you're still not, you're like mid-trimester at that point, right? At the nineteenth?
Yes, the thought was, the thought was that we'd also transition in on the twenty-seventh, i- it. I don't think we necessarily need to, even though we have students in high school classes, the, the class continues on, it doesn't, it doesn't transfer over. Because it's Spanish and algebra, they're just year-long courses, so we can, we can work on that.
So those are kids are going to be working in sort of a modified fashion, no matter what happens.
Yep.
All right. Well, all right, Heather, do you want to, just to make this nice and clean, do you want to vote on your motion and then maybe do a different one, or would you like to remove it?
So honestly, my motion just says that we would stay remote until the nineteenth. Except for the, except for the Executive sixty-four kids that one weekend in December, and then we'd start the principal's calendar. So, there's absolutely no difference between what my motion intended and what you said.
Well, I think if we approve the calendar as a whole, to recommend to the whole board, if we get it edited where we want, we can make one motion at the board meeting and have it all.
It is one motion, and on the nineteenth.
And we're going to also have to approve this calendar.
Begin the principal's calendar.
Oh, so, and then you want to approve the principal's calendar?
Starting nineteenth.
Okay, but I, can we make the edits to the principal calendar then before we do that? Because I'm not really comfortable making that, approving this calendar as it's written in this very moment. Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
I, I don't have any calendar in front of me right now, but you're talking about the week of December fourteenth. You know, because Mark Bagley had mentioned that for, for those kiddos. Don't we also have the week of the twenty-first, three days of school? Wouldn't that also be included, so, so they would get eight days of school and not just five? I, I don't have the overall district calendar in front of me to know, but I didn't think that winter break started on December eighteenth.
That would be accurate, the, the calendar as you have it, it is on, you're right, it is.
Right.
The fifteenth or the fourteenth to the twenty-third.
And that would give those kiddos three more days, you know, of in-person services, that's all.
Okay, I retract my motion. We'll start over.
All right, so, I would like to move that we strike the word hybrid. After, on the principal's calendar. To say in-person, starting on January nineteenth, replace the word hybrid with in-person learning. Do I have a second? All right.
Sure, I'm waving because I can't, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond, all right, so does anyone have any complaints for that? Okay, yes, Ms. Johnson?
I'm just not going to support this because I think that waiting those two weeks is another period of time that the students are missing. And trying to get back into the schools. And I just, I have a real problem with that. Okay, I think we just keep pushing it out and pushing it out and pushing it out, it's just going to keep getting pushed out.
When, when do you think we should?
I think it should be right after vacation.
Yeah.
I think it should be, kids, the students are coming back January fourth, I think they should be back in school January fourth, I think we need a plan in place.
So, I agree with you on the fact that the kids who need, who want to be back in school should be back in school. But I think it's going to be a lot easier for staffing issues and to modify any classrooms that need to. Change, especially at the elementary and middle school level of teachers, of kids choose a different path if we do it. At the semester break, maybe not the middle school, that's not really going to help you guys, but you guys are really, I feel bad for you.
You know what, this should be, have been planned out a long time on how all this matrix was going to look. That it's come to the board and we, the board has been sitting here and trying to figure this out. This should have been administration that figured all of this out, not the board, we should have been able to approve things and not have this mess that we're going through here. I mean, we've got people, parents in the community, and I, and I said all along, do full remote or do, and, and do full in-class, people had the choices then. The question is, would more parents maybe have gone remote? Maybe, more parents gone classroom, maybe, but it is the administration in the district to figure out where they're going to get the teachers. Not the board to figure this whole thing out. I'm not an administrator, I'm not a principal, I'm just the board that was elected to oversee. And that the superintendent works for us. You know, we're all trying, we're working hard here, I'm not going to say that nobody is, is not working hard here. But, again, I keep thinking about these poor students that need to do, or some kids that have to be back in that classroom. Set aside special ed that need that classroom setting to learn. And I'm looking at this with the high school students and the seniors, and they're going, it's, it's going, it's slipping away as fast as it's coming, it's slipping away for these seniors. And I'll tell you, if I had kids in school, I'd be fuming even more as a, as a board member. And some people remember me as when I had my kids in school. And I fought for them, and just like every parent who's out there fighting for their kids, I applaud them. So, I just can't see, we're going into the nineteenth, then something's going to happen, now it's into February, then we have the breaks and then we're out of school for another three weeks. It's just, it's a boomerang effect, I'm just not going to support this at this point in time.
Okay, all right, so, the motion on the floor is to strike the word hybrid from the. Principal's calendar beginning on January nineteenth and replace it with in-person for, through the rest of the remainder of the school year. Heather Raymond, have you, oh, sorry, Ms. Kinsella, go ahead.
Could you help define what in-person means compared to hybrid?
Um, I think the, my impression of what we have as the hybrid plan right now is that model that we. Of the phased model that we had back months and months ago, where you're talking two half-days per. Week, I mean, I think the half-days are. Not really ideal for anyone, when we move it to in-person, if we need to modify it to. By saying that we're going to have kids in-person on regular school days or remote, we don't have then this in-between group. That is transitioning at odd times or. You know, parents have a clear idea, my kids are either going to school or they're not. What if the numbers in the community are not in the yellow or green zone, then they're going to be remote. And. I think we're being really clear on what. The expectations are of both the parents and the district, we're not saying, we're not trying, and few kids can get a full day of learning. Today, we can deliver information, go ahead, Tara.
So in-person is Monday through Friday, from their normal start time to their normal departure time. As our calendar has, or as our school day has always been in years past, that's what in-person means for you.
Correct, do I need to write that into the motion?
Uh, no, I just, well.
Yeah.
This is a definition, so.
All right, but maybe we'll follow up with that, yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Would, would the current hybrid model not be considered in-person? Like by, by how you're trying to describe moving forward, because it sounds like that's completely off the table now. As far as those hybrid classes, so if parents are going to make a decision about whether or not they want remote or. Whatever Plan B is, there is no Plan C is what you're saying.
Yes, basically, you're in school, if the numbers in the community have risen past the point that we can be in school, everyone will be remote, because we want to stay safe. If we're, if they go back down, then we can go into school, people with the remote option will still always have their mode option for twenty-twenty-one till the end of the school year. But I think it makes it really clear under those circumstances that parents who want to have their students. In the classroom can do that and where, and they can get a full day of learning. Mr. Richard, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Who was it?
Mike, go ahead, Vish.
I just wanted to also understand that in that situation, on that given day, for the kids that are in person. We are still bound to abide by social distancing and health recommendations, right, so.
Yes, that is correct, they, all of the CDC recommendations about mask wearing would be in place, and I'll be happy to write that into the motion, I wish that was included in this. Appendix of a calendar, so that would be awesome, mask wearing will be instituted at all levels. And if we're, and in any time, social distancing is not possible. Um, yes, Ms., I'm sorry, Mr. Richard or Miss, or Nurse Gina, which one would like to go first, you both raise your hands?
Jump in real quick, I'm just going to jump off what Mr. Mahoney was saying, just the two things that we'd have to consider at the high school is based on the numbers of students who are surveyed. That chose in-person learning, we may not have the capacity in our classrooms to social distance based on those numbers. Um, and then two, one of the reasons that we had looked at a half-day in that hybrid model is because. As we talked about earlier, high school teachers are not going to be able to separate the remote kids, they're still going to be on their roster. And we need to find time for them to still continue to educate those students who have chose remote. So, that's where we thought they can still stream in, but there also might be some of that flexibility in the afternoon, so just two things to consider as we move forward with this.
Do you feel like there's place in that high school schedule for. As you said, streaming in for, are you saying you have a teacher that's going to be teaching both a remote student and a in-school student simultaneously?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So that's what we've got, so.
I think our schedules are a little bit more difficult, you know, at an elementary, you might have two first-grade teachers, and you can say first-grade teacher A is teaching all remote kids. First-grade teacher B is teaching all in-person, in-person students, or is it the high school, we could have somebody who's teaching AP Biology, Biotech class, and AP Chem or something like that. And they're the only teacher that does that, so they have to be able to service both, and the schedule is just too cumbersome for us to be able to go, go forward and make changes on now. We've got full-year classes, semester classes, quarter classes, so it would take a massive overhaul of, you know, and scheduling takes about three to four months for us to set that all up.
So you're, I'm sorry, so you're talking about synchronous learning, where the teacher would be live streaming from their classroom to. The remote kids at home while they simultaneously teach the kids in the classroom?
I just don't see us having any other way to do it.
Because this is, can I just say that it is mid-November, and this is the first time that that has been explained to the board? So like, we've been asking, how are teachers going to teach remote and hybrid? And we're hearing stuff about like independent study and they'll get to the remote kids in the afternoon. And this is the first time I've heard anything since we asked in August about upgrading bandwidth, about teachers live streaming simultaneous to teaching in a classroom. And that. Makes the hybrid plan make sense for the first time in three months. So thank you for that.
Raymond, just to jump in, it's right, and if the teacher's there, and again, this is something we envision, we need to probably even practice. So the teacher's going to have their computer on, their webcam on, and kids in front of them and, and kids out and at home. Your attention is going to be divided. So if that student chose remote and they're never coming in, they're going to get limited access to their teacher because the teacher's going to have kids in front of them turning to a camera and things like that. So that's just one of the things we have to weigh as we move forward with our plans is there's going to be a trade-off with something, right? Currently, we have a hundred percent, we're a hundred percent staff right now and a hundred percent scheduled. And I know that there are issues with being remote, the socialization piece, the things that Ms. Johnson spoke about tonight, the psyche of our students. We just have to understand there will be a trade-off with something as we move forward because the teacher only has X amount of time to teach that class. And their attention is going to be diverted potentially into three different groups, two cohorts in a remote group. The schedule is just too complex to take out our remote kids and create a separate schedule based on the teachers that have chosen remote. It just wouldn't, it would never work.
Right, it's just up until now, the explanation has, has seemed to imply that anybody who wasn't physically in the classroom at that moment would have some sort of independent study work to do. Which was a big concern for parents whether they chose hybrid or not, because if you're going to choose. Remote and then your kid's not going to ever be face-to-face with the teacher except for office hours, well, then you're basically homeschooling your kid. But if you're picking remote, knowing that on four days a week while those other kids are in school, your kid's watching it, assuming you don't have connectivity issues, and then you have office hours on top of it. And for those kids in hybrid, you have two days a week in front of the teacher, two days, well, three, I guess, or two, not kind of right, I, chis, watching them and then still office hours. That's a very different decision matrix that parents are going to be making. And I suddenly feel a whole heck of a lot better about the whole thing.
Like I feel like Heather, I feel exactly the opposite. I feel like that seems like way worse.
Which is, I just. There's a lot of different opportunity here. I mean, there, at the middle school.
Like a light bulb.
Elementary, we've been talking a lot about high school. At the middle school level, there's many times that we're very much like the high school. In this case, we're very much like the elementary where. We can't, we can have, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity, moment in time opportunity to seize where we can have at the middle school level and potentially at the elementary level. And I don't want to speak for Mike and the rest of his cohort, but we can have a remote academy, if you will. We're, we're students who are out, are out and are being taught by remote teachers. Whether the teachers are home or in the building, they're teaching a subgroup, a cohort of, and we can have in-person learning with students in the building. And I would agree with Keith and Nate, that can't happen or it's very highly unlikely to happen at the high school because that comes with a whole different set of variables. Singleton classes, classes for credit where they have to move on to college very, you know. But the middle school and the elementary is, you have the opportunity and this, it might be the time where we bifurcate and we look at what's an avenue that the high school is going to go down and what if the high, what avenue to the middle and elementary. But we don't have to look at this globally and totally holistic and everyone do exactly the same thing. It'd be nice, but I'm not quite sure that that's, you know.
Right, well, the, the element, I was just saying, the elementary schools already have remote teachers with remote students and high teachers with hybrid students. It's the middle school now that sounds like. That has kind of the worst of both worlds at the current moment where you have everybody all muddled up and we don't know about live streaming or we don't know about the other thing. So. That needs to be worked on.
So that's awesome. That's actually awesome that you guys feel like you're poised to do that, Mr. Fosarano. Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah, I just was going to say, you're going to put a survey out and someone's picking remote, that's very different at the high school level apparently than it is at the elementary level. So that same parent that has a kid in fifth grade and has a kid in ninth grade, they're not actually choosing the same model just because they chose remote for both their kids. And that's important to distinguish, I think, because I wasn't even aware of like at the high school, how that was set up because frankly, we're too busy to worry about the high schools.
Understandably, so Mrs. Rourke.
So I am that high school teacher that you're talking about. I teach English at Nashville South and I am actually one of those singleton teachers who teaches AP Lit at South and I'm currently the only person who teaches that course. All of this discussion. Requires. The board to consider the high school experience and I speak only on behalf of high school teachers here. We're talking about making changes in January. January is our very busiest time of the year. We have preparation for final assessments. We have final assessments. We literally have some teachers, if they have three classes of thirty students, they have ninety students. In a semester, they have ninety midterm assessments to grade and literally the next day, they have ninety new students directly in front of them. And potentially different courses with different curriculum that they taught first semester. So I would ask that if we are going to be making changes from remote to hybrid, that we please decide soon so that teachers have time and opportunity to train and to plan. Because I've been teaching for thirty years. I'm very comfortable in front of the classroom. I've become very comfortable in a Zoom meeting teaching as well. But my comfort level will diminish when I have potentially fifteen kids in front of me, plus me in the classroom. So that's sixteen people, which may or may not satisfy social distancing rules. And I'm concentrating on the fifteen kids in front of me for two days a week, a different set of fifteen kids in front of me for another two days a week. And then I have a, a laptop or an iPad where I'm trying to engage the kids who are learning remotely. And I'm trying to set up all of the, the technology and, you know, cross my fingers that it works and engage all of those people. I think it can be done, but I don't think we can turn on a dime and do it. I think we need to, to be set up. I think we need to practice. I think we need to understand the room layout. And the other thing that I'd like to mention is that we're not like an elementary school where you have twenty-five students who come to a classroom in the morning and then leave at two-thirty in the afternoon. Our classrooms see, you know, thirty kids four times a day. And often different teachers, I, you know, I don't have my own classroom space. I just travel from one classroom to the next. So I'm also very concerned that, you know, as we open up the schools again, that we have janitorial staff in place and time. To, to sanitize the rooms in between classes because we have five minutes of passing time right now in between our classes. And we want to make sure that the room that kid, rooms that kids are coming into are as sanitized and safe as they were at the beginning of the day. So. I think everything that we're talking about is possible, but I am feeling a little bit of heart palpitations when I'm hearing that, you know, maybe we'll decide in January about what will happen later in January. We need to plan. We need to know now. We need to know how to move forward and, you know, as a, as a head teacher, I need to be able to shepherd my department through that kind of a transition. And that will be a very significant transition. So what I'm, what I'm asking is that, you know, exactly what Mr. Fosarano was saying, that, you know, we, we don't all fit into the same box. Different levels have different needs and different considerations and I'm speaking on behalf of high school teachers, just helping you become aware of some of the peculiarities of, of our scheduling and our situation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rourke. I really respect. Your perspective and the fact that I recognize this needs to be. Accelerated a little bit on our decision-making process because teachers and families and administration needs the planning time that, and you deserve it. I mean, and the comfort kind of comes the closer you get because it's not something that you just all of a sudden in one morning and are wake up and it's like, oh, this feels great. Thank you so much for that perspective. Okay, so. I'm thinking maybe where we need to go in order to get this plan in motion. I mean, the motion on the floor was to remove the word hybrid in favor of in-person. On the schedule so that we only have two options to work with. I'm going to call the question on that, or I'm sorry, that's not the right phraseology. I'm going to go ahead and take a vote on that. We can vote however you want. And then I think we need to move on. Next to possibly speaking to the. High school calendar and the. Middle school and elementary calendar separately based on what we've just heard from the administrative staff. Maybe we're talking about two different items and I realize we are getting into the wee hours. I was hope, you know, I know we started early. If you guys are willing to keep digging, diving into this to get the job done, I really appreciate you being here. Just, you know, I don't take any of you for granted and you're out, out of work hours. I really appreciate it. So on the motion to. Change the word hybrid to in-person on the calendar beginning. After the nineteenth and beyond. Ms. Raymond?
Yeah.
And Ms. Johnson?
No.
Alright, my vote is yes. Motion fails two to one. Um, so, alright, let's move back a second. From here on out, we, what do you, does the committee think about treating the discussion separately between elementary and middle school? And high school when it comes to the calendar? Does that make you feel more confident in this discussion?
I thought. That the calendar proposed by the principals already broken up based on grade level on who returns when. So they have elementary coming back first and then they have middle school and high school coming back second when the second semester begins. And so we would not bring anybody back earlier. We're talking about if our conditions worsen or don't get better, that we would simply not bring them back, like that we might bring them back later. Like, does that make sense? If the first day of hybrid on semester two, day one, we have five hundred new cases and our community, you know, hospitalization rate is at like fourteen percent. I wouldn't say let's bring the kids back and the teachers back. I'd say let's wait.
Well, we wouldn't because we approved this matrix. We will only use this matrix going forward unless we approve something different. So if the numbers are at like seven thousand people in our community have COVID, everybody's staying home. Now we know why. Okay, so this is what we're using. Well, we're not using it yet until the thirtieth when the rest of the board approves it. Um, so, sorry, that was, next, we'll move on to the calendar and I think there was a little bit of discrepancy here and I think it's because we've got a lot of paper in front of us. The. Grades come in at different spots on this calendar. You've got. Pre-K and K and then you've got three and then you've got nine and six or six and nine and then you've got seven, eight. Four, seven, eight, ten, and then five comes in, in, on the eighth. Like they're not, it's not like elementary school or high school at the. At the semester points. They're like all kind of sporadic. So I think that we should plan, I don't know. I think we ought to bring the elementary and middle school back on the nineteenth after MLK Day and there's time for. There's time for. Self-quarantining after the Christmas, after the holiday break and then high school, they get their marching orders to begin on this, at the semester transition. As Ms. Rourke pointed out. That is going to be a quick turn for people. But that seems like the logical transition point. And since you've got tenth and eleventh and twelfth graders that might be on taking some of the same classes, it makes sense to me to have them take their classes begin at the same point, time. So. I don't know. So I think that, that's where I see, that's where I see the hole in this, that we still are talking about. Fifth graders don't actually go back to school on a two-day hybrid plan until February eighth and then they're off. Uh, so that would be. Four half-days in the school and then they're off in winter break. And then if we keep the quarantine period, it would be like they actually aren't really starting school until March fifteenth. At which point, why bring them in at all? I mean, is the goal, honestly, I'm going to ask you guys, is the goal of this to stay remote for the spring semester? Like, if you, if that's what you think we should do is stay remote for twenty twenty-one, we'll put it in front of the board and see if it passes. Because this is. Pretty, at least it'll let people, teachers, everyone plan because once you do this kind of changing around every other, every other week for ten weeks. It's not good for anybody's education. Go ahead, Mr. Mahoney.
Yeah, I think initially we were following the very first proposed calendar that was even put out at the beginning of the year to get the hybrid kids in. I do not know what impact this has on transportation. I think that is something you need to investigate. Because I know that, first of all, they needed to see how many kids were going to ride the bus. How many kids can you fit on the bus with distancing? And I don't know what the guidelines are with first student or day of Rocio. So I know that's a challenge that we're trying to be cognizant of. I'm sure we could look at bringing in maybe more than one grade a week. I understand that. But we also have to train the kids who have not been in the building since March about how to walk in the hallway, about where they can be and not be. And we, we have lines painted on the sidewalk outside the school. We have lines painted inside the school and we're training five, six, seven-year-olds to do that. And they've never been there before like this. So to ask us to bring hundred and fifty kids in who haven't been put in the building yet. Right, right after Martin Luther King Day. And I think that's why we proposed to kind of do it in a graduated way. That does not mean we want fifth grade out until February. I agree with you on that point. I think the sooner the better. But doing it safely and smartly. And again, like I said, the other logistics with transportation, I do not know if it's an issue or if it's not.
I got to think before I make any more motions. So if any of the committee members would like to make any more motions. Alright, let's move on. We had a report from the. Staff from the, staff data from the HR committee. I think she kind of gave us an overview on that already. We don't have any and we are going to keep working on it. Let's see, updated instructional hours. Let's, can, we get an overview on the update to instructional hours and then we will move back, circle back to the calendar in a little while.
Certainly, so I'm just going to get to that section so I can visually see it. The state put out a technical advisory in October that we reviewed. Some of the information was more expanded upon. We looked at deeper how our, each level was broken out. And we did a little bit of revamping to make sure that we were meeting the state minimum required hours. The state is. Counting office hours as instruction as long as teachers are open and available to students. So in doing that, if you look at the chart that was in your packets. We compared last year or what a normal school year is for hours. And what we did was since the state had waived three days, we minus out those hours and came up with a total of where we needed to be. We calculated what our, our current school day looked like, multiplied at times the forty-seven days that we have currently been in school. And gave us a subtotal of anywhere from two hundred and thirty-eight hours for elementary to two hundred and sixty-three at the high school. We knew that we had to do a correction. We knew that we had to do a correction of certain. Length of day to meet our minimum required hours. Kind of worked backwards and I will absolutely defer to Lisa Jingeris on that because her mathematical skills got us there. And we came up with the exact daily total that we had to change our schedules. To meet the minimum required hours. We needed thirteen minutes per day in the elementary. And we needed to add fifty minutes per day for the middle school. So some tweaking of the schedules were done. You saw those. We gave you the before and after in your packet. And I think we are on schedule to, and again, this was using remote. It wasn't taking any different models or anything with hybrid or in-person. This was strictly on what we are currently doing now. And so we've tweaked our schedules to meet those needs.
For that update. Are we, we got some great emails today about some of the teachers who are. Reading specialists and different things like that, who are really using those office hours. To really help a lot. Is there any chance? Since they are by appointment, is there any chance that teachers are also? Making, seeking out students to come to those appointments as opposed to just relying on students coming in to. Approaching the teachers and I'm seeing some nodding from Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Fosorano. Mrs. Rourke, go ahead.
And I'll be brief, but yes, teachers are always reaching out to students and asking them to come to office hours. We use the time for makeup, we use the time for remediation, we use the time for writing conferences. We use the time, I teach all seniors, I do a lot of college search conversations with students, but. It, sometimes kids self-advocate and they ask us for office hours, but just as frequently, we reach out to them and say. Let's meet at, you know, eight-thirty today for a half an hour and put it in the calendar. And send a Zoom link and it's as simple as that. It's a very successful model.
Often, what's happening at the middle school, we have, we have team meetings, every team has team meeting. Every time a team meeting occurs, there's, one of the counselors are there. And what's either happening is one of three things. The counselor is asking the teachers to set up a meeting. With them at request of a parent or student, the student or parent can't do it. The teachers sometimes ask the counselors to do that for them as well. If they're very busy and most likely what we're getting is students reaching out, which is fantastic because we're trying to teach that soft skill of self-advocacy. To their teachers asking, can I meet you at this time Friday? Can you meet you at this time any day of the week? That their office hours, which is great. So you're killing two birds with one stone. Not the best term, but we are teaching that soft skill of self-advocacy, which I know is not on the table here, but it's wonderful that that's happening. Plus, we are getting those intimate moments that we're trying to get with students to have that one-on-one remediate. Yeah, actually, there's some advancing that's going on too, which is, which is great.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mahoney.
Yeah, and I just want to add, I don't like the term office hours for some reason. It doesn't seem very friendly. I like to call it the back table. If we were all in school, regular end of a lesson. If anyone needs extra help, I'm going to be at the back table, come back with me and sometimes you might say, you and you, I need you to come with me to that back table. Well, this time at the end of the day, it's the back table and teachers invite kids and teachers. More than invite kids to, to join them at those hours and that, that's the back table and. That's, it's happening in every class with every teacher.
I'd just like to add that it's, this environment that we're in right here for this meeting isn't conducive for a lot of students to speak up. They don't feel comfortable to. And we've gotten some student feedback that they rely on those office hours to get that one-on-one time with their teachers and. That's what's helped them get across the finish line in many of their classes, so they, they log into their classes, they listen. They might not participate as much as they would have if they were in person, but those office hours are what able to, for them to get caught up and have that. Meeting time to create that relationship with the teacher to move forward.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, um. No, I was just saying, maybe that's something that Mrs. Heinz could zhuzh that up a little bit and change the name from office hours to like intensive. Helper, I don't know, something, something fancy and good, maybe one at, one segment's office hours and the other one is. Back table, round table, I don't know, something fun like that. Makes people feel good. All right, any questions from the committee members regarding the ever-changing? Instructional hours? I'm seeing none. Next. Item. On the agenda. Travel quarantine. Guidance. Is there anyone from the administration who would like to speak to that or is this strictly informational?
Basically informational, just to help you understand why our calendars were devised the way they were. And the, I know that I, I think. Department of Health is off both of our representatives, but it was recommended from the state and the Department of Health and. So we put it in for your guidance.
All right, thank you very much and I think we're on the same page on that, you know. Be safe and look out for your fellow man. Yes, go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Thank you, I just, I have two things. One, Ms. Odin texted me and she can hear, but she can't speak. And she had a question, but no one could hear her saying that she had a question. And then also. I wanted to make a motion for. Being all remote those two weeks after Christmas big break. So Ms. Odin's question is, would high school have the needed hours if? They took the twenty-seventh to the twenty-ninth to pivot to the second semester? I don't actually know what that means.
She's saying like a kind of a slow rollout, like, actually, Ms. Odin, if you're capable, could you type in the chat? Is it, maybe do us, are you talking about maybe a transitional, slow roll, maybe ninth comes in one day, tenth? Eleven, twelve, is that kind of what you're thinking? Or are you thinking maybe one week of remote learning?
She can't use the chat, she can't use the chat either. But she didn't answer my question. I think I understand what she's getting at and I don't know if I can get feedback from her. But I think she was hearing what I and some others were talking about at, at the high school level when we. Transition from one semester to the next. It's an extremely abrupt transition. We literally move from one semester to the next with just a, a day, you know, not even a day in between and overnight. Where we have to close out grades for ninety students and, you know, read all of their exams and do everything and then literally. See a new set of kids in front of us and teach new classes potentially. And so I believe that what. Mrs. Odin might have been asking is, can we maybe give high school teachers a little breathing room in there, a day or two to transition? Between the semester since not only would it be the difficult transition that it usually is, but adding in a new teaching model as well. I think.
Yes, that is what she's saying and also. Since we have the Fridays as office hours anyways, it's really. You know, just that Wednesday and Thursday. For semester two and then Friday is like office hours, so. That's, that was her.
The other thing on January twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth that the high school admin and Keith and Nate jump in, please. In the middle school, we put grades six and nine coming in just those two days, again, assuming it was going to be hybrid. And fifty percent of them would come in on Wednesday, fifty percent of them on Thursday. Because those students have never stepped foot in those buildings. Normally at the beginning of the year, we have a freshman orientation. I believe middle school was moving to a sixth grade orientation this year. So that's why those two grades were coming into the buildings by themselves. And then at the high school level, you have all mixed classes, so bringing the four grades in separately doesn't make as much sense. At the high school level as it does at the elementary and middle school level, so that's why you see those. Kind of like those two orientation days and then on February first, the rest of the high school just comes in.
Agreed, yeah, from the middle school level. I know I'm kind of double talking now, but. The nineteenth would be fine if we, if we're looking at that, but if we can have a couple of days for sixth grade to come in and get acclimated to the school and then. Start with seventh and eighth, the whole school a couple of days later, that'd be, that'd be. Totally perfect scenario, but I don't want to muddy the water too much with the calendar.
Actually, no, that's good, that's good. That sounds good reasoning. I, I thank you for the support information, both of you. That's exactly what the kind of stuff we need to hear. All right, so. Let's talk instructional time. I kind of like where we're headed with this and I like, thank you, Ms. Odin, even though he can only hear us. Ninth grade, and maybe I'm not going to ask this for you, Ms. Rourke. If ninth grade started on the twenty-seventh and had basically essentially three-day, I mean. Or remote students, I just want to be clear, remote students who choose remote are still remote in all of these scenarios. Ninth graders come in maybe Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, just them. And then start the, the seniors, everybody else, I guess, which is kind of what you had going on, but now that's, I understand why. Beginning on Monday, so they still have some kind of. Zoom or something with their teachers for those first three days, but we're going to get the ninth graders acclimated to the school. And then everybody else comes in on. Monday, February first.
I mean, I would defer to, to Keith and Nate in that regard, but. What you're suggesting would be time for the, the, the ninth graders to. Not only acclimate themselves to, to the building, but also the, the schedule and the. You know, the, the moving around and the, you know, the hybrid schedule if that's what we're in. And please make no mistake, if the other kids aren't in the building, they will still be learning. They'll still be getting instruction on Google Classroom and, you know, Zoom and however. The teachers can arrange it for the, the tenth through twelfth graders who would be out of the building. Instruction would still occur, so it would not be lost time for anyone. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, you did, thank you. I'm just thinking. All right. So I think we should, I, I return to this. From, I guess, okay, so I guess that's the second question and maybe this is back to Ms. Consilla and Ms. Jingeris. Under that model where the ninth grade comes in separate, comes in first. With a little bit of a transition point before the people would come at the tenth through twelfth graders. Would we still be meeting, meeting all of our instructional hour deficit?
We, we would because as Ms. Rourke just said, teachers would still be teaching those other students while they're. Learning remotely, just like they are now. Any increase to the number of hours would increase our instructional time. That is, as, as Tara explained, the, that chart on instruction hours is based on the current schedule.
Okay. Awesome, um, that makes me feel good. I like that. All right, so I realized this is hard to do far away from people. It'd be so much easier if we had like a big whiteboard. You know, you guys are all teachers, you know what I'm talking about. All right, we got to get this done and we've got, let's see, principal's memo with calendar. We're finally there. We did this calendar items. We have to have something to push to the board on. The thirtieth. What if? We accept. This calendar, the principal's calendar. Through the nineteenth. On the nineteenth, but this is where we're going to start treating. Elementary and middle school differently than. The high school. I think it looks like we have to look at, use that semester break. As the transition point. As Mr. Fosorano was mentioning, maybe we could move the sixth graders up to the nineteenth instead of losing at the, the midweek at the transit, at the semester. Because they're not actually on semesters. So I guess that'll be my first motion, just to try to make this as clean as possible. I move to make the grade six entry date January nineteenth instead of January twenty-seventh. May I get a second?
I have to be honest here. I don't like the idea of tweaking the calendar a few, I. So that I don't like it. I fail to see the purpose of tweaking the principal's proposed calendar by literally. Three days, really, once you figure that they're only in half the time.
My hope is that they're going to be in full the time.
There's no way that will pass the board, though. Like, there's just no way you would get a majority board to vote for that.
You think the board would like, would prefer to keep them in two days a week and half days for the rest of the school year?
Before we move to full-time in January, yeah.
Well, if we use this little chart, we won't have to even think about it.
So I guess, I guess my feeling is, it's almost eight-thirty, a lot of the people on this call have been working. For more than twelve hours now. I just hate to see us monkeying around with their work at this time of night unless we really have to. And I'm not convinced that we really have to.
Noted. Let's see, so. I guess we can. Quite, would you like to accept, would you like to move to accept the calendar as presented, Heather?
Sure. I'll make the motion.
Calendar as presented.
Sorry, are you making it and I'm seconding it?
No, your, your motion.
Okay.
Is it seconded by Ms. Johnson?
Nope, I'm not going to second it. I just want to speak on it.
Oh, all right. I'll second it for the purpose of discussion. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I'm just going to say, the way everything looks, I'll be surprised if these kids ever come out of the mouth. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and vote on the motion unless anyone else would like to speak to it. No, okay, Heather, Ms. Raymond, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson? Ms. Brown votes no, motion fails. Would anyone like to present a different calendar to send to the board for recommendation? On November thirtieth? No, okay, I'm really sorry to hear that and I'm sorry that we don't want to discuss it anymore. I recognize, I really want to. Tell the administrators in this building, this. Meeting that I think you've been working really hard and I appreciate it. I just think that there's. Too many glaring holes to approve this calendar at this time. I think that we have. It's too bad that we're kind of at crunch time and we can't make. We've been having months. To prep for this and at no fault, you guys have been working really hard on it, but the. Options presented to the board are just not acceptable right now. I guess I would like to. Move to. Direct the. District Office and Administration to. Bring us another calendar which has a option for in-person learning included on it for the spring semester. With a timeline of our December meeting. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, seconded by Heather. And. Ms. Johnson, all right, does anyone like to speak to the motion? All right, Heather, how do you, Ms. Raymond, how do you vote?
I'm sure, I'll vote yes.
Ms. Johnson, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. All right, so we are going to move to recommend to the full board on the thirtieth to go back to the drawing board. Or direct the district administrators to go back to the drawing board for a new calendar. I think alright.
Ms. Brown, could you give, since we're all here and we're listening, could you give us the points that you, that not that you're looking for, but the reasons that you don't want this calendar approved, so that we have some direction to maybe get a head start on and
You know, I'll defer to other members of the committee. If there's anything that they would like to see included in the next version of this calendar, that would be great.
I'd like to see how we're gonna start in-person learning for our students. Because I, again, it it just has to be done. You know, if some have to remote show how we're going to do remote and in-person together, the hybrid to me two and a half days is just, it's why even have them in school two and a half days. If they're worried about them getting sick, you're already in the building. So you're there. And a half a day, there's not a lot that can be done in a half a day. I think this is the disservice to our students. The parents and also the taxpayers of this city, so I'm looking to see in-person and remote being hand in hand throughout the day in case, you know, so we're going to have, you know, we're going to have students promoting.
So for clarification, Ms. Johnson, I I'm not sure if that would be the calendar or our reopening plan.
Both, both. It's going to have to be on the calendar if you're going to reopen. You've got to show where it's going to start and where it's going to end. And it's got to be on the calendar. Thank you.
Ms. Raymond, do you have anything that you'd like included in the next version?
Of the calendar? Um, no, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea to throw it out there that we have a goal of being back in person in March. Assuming that our little chart works, but I would rather personally use the little chart to move up and down between remote and hybrid and upping phases of hybrid, et cetera. I was really very concerned about the district's hybrid plan. And how that was going to work until tonight, so I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. You guys have a way of explaining things that I can hear and it doesn't make me feel like an idiot and I, it's almost like your teachers. So thanks for that. I appreciate it. That's all.
Yeah, I think the things that are missing from this plan are the, this calendar are the things that have been missing from our plan moving forward the entire time. There's so much missing from I I think that was important that to treat the different grade levels differently, elementary and middle school and high school are different, and I think that we, I think that they did a great job trying to make it all the same, but it's really not. I don't see a reason why moving forward in different buildings, we can't bring people into the school at the same time. I think not even presenting an in-person, multiple day, full day option. Continuing that is folly. And so I guess that's what I'm looking for specifics on, on how you define hybrid learning on the difference between in-person. I mean, I think I should, you know, Nashua is different, but I think a lot of other area schools, I know some area private schools, they started the year with giving parents an option between fully remote, hybrid, which is a couple of days a week, or fully in-person, and the logistics of it were just far worse. So they moved it to the option of being in-person or fully remote. It's working at the private schools here in Nashua, and believe me when I say I recognize that's a completely different population. But the fact that we're out eight hundred students from our normal numbers, some of those are our population, they are our students, and when we talk about competing, you know, we we like to compare ourselves, well, you know, everybody's in the same boat. Everybody's working on this hybrid model. Everybody's in remote learning. And now we are that's not the facts, and the kids that our kids are going to be competing against for their scholarships are kids that have been gotten, been in school for months now. Like I said, I do think that we missed the boat on opening the school district for the kids who could, were prepared to go into the classroom early. Now our numbers are too high to do it. But we don't even have a plan to open that box in the spring, and I'm pretty disappointed. I really thought that we were going to be getting some work done tonight. If there's anybody here right now that would like to throw out another idea or would like to advocate for one of these plans, the things that were going amiss by reexamining and projecting it out, because I really am honestly, I'm very worried about the administrative at each of these individual schools having to come up with a plan in you know, four weeks instead of eight. I don't, I think your job is getting harder, and I think by not being able to hash it out tonight is a mistake. Does anyone have anything to say? Yes, Ms. Jingeras?
You asked for suggestions, so I'm just going to throw this out there. Would it be possible, because it sounds, in listening to everybody, that you're disappointed in not seeing the potential for full in-person in the spring? Would it be possible to at least accept this calendar through February vacation? That way people would know and be able to plan, you know, when is grade two going into the building? When is grade three going in? When are the middle school grades going in? Possibly even after Mr. Mahoney suggested, talking to transportation. Can we condense grades three, four, and five into fewer weeks? Maybe something along those lines that speaks to what Mrs. Rourke suggested, that it would give teachers time to plan. They would know, hopefully after Monday, what grades coming in when? That gets us through February vacation. And then hopefully through January and February, we see the numbers starting to come down, and then we can start to plan for a more aggressive, get everybody back into the buildings.
I'd be willing to make that motion.
Yes.
I think the problem with, I will accept that motion if that's what you'd make, and Lisa, I really appreciate where you're going with this. I think the problem is that under that, we still don't have all the kids in the building until the middle of February. And not even all the kids, the kids who want to be in there, I need to be clear, until the middle of February. And then they go on vacation, and then I have a feeling we're going to have the same argument we're having right now to say, hey, we need two weeks of quarantine, so they get two, they seriously, they get four half-days of school for the fifth graders, and then they're going to be out of school for three weeks. That's honestly, it's, I don't know. Would you like that motion, Heather? If you, would you like to make that motion?
Well, honestly, yes, but it's eight thirty-six now, and I honestly, I feel like we're just like if it's not, if if the read of the room is that it's not going to pass, I don't want to keep everybody here and I'd rather
Paula, will you vote for it? Yeah, alright, and Heather, you said you're not going to vote for anything that in the full boardroom, you don't want to, you don't want to talk about moving the ninth graders to the nineteenth, or the same, sorry, the sixth graders, the nineteenth, and having the high school kids start back at the semester break, that you don't want to talk about that. I mean, if you're not going to vote for it in the full board, there's no reason for us to mess with it right now. What? If you're not going to recommend, if you're not going to vote for it, again, we shouldn't waste time talking about it.
Right.
So do you want, so you are not willing, you're not going to move on changing any of the wording to have in-person learning?
No.
And I'm not going to move on having the kids back in February, so I guess that what we're have, we're kind of at a stalemate here. I'm sorry, principals. I will go ahead and make the motion to since we're hopefully going to be getting a new calendar by the December meeting to approve for spring. I will move to stay in remote learning district-wide, excluding the students who have already entered the classroom for at this point through Martin Luther King Day. Can I have a second?
I'll second that. I just want to make sure I understand it, so.
So basically, it's the same thing. It's, if that's what they're having us do, it's just not
Until the nineteenth.
Until the nineteenth.
Okay. So I vote yes.
Alright. Paula?
No.
Alright, I'll vote yes. That will be sent to the full board, where to recommend that we stay remote learning until the nineteenth, we're accepting so a few populations, and we have requested that you come back to this committee with a new calendar for the spring semester at the December committee. Alright, everyone, thank you. Oh, yes, Ms. Consilla, go ahead.
We have one person in the waiting room.
It's wonderful. We are opening the lines. Thank you very much. I kind of had forgotten. I've got lots of notes in my thing here. Alright, so we're going to, before we adjourn, we do have public comment available, so we're going to keep to our two minutes per caller if we can. Callers, before you begin speaking, please mute your television. There is a sixty-second delay, and go ahead, Ms. Consilla, when you're ready to let them in. Yes, okay, caller number seven, two eight nine two.
Hello?
You're on mute, Jessica. Go ahead, caller. Hi, if you're waiting to hear yourself on television, you won't, because there's a delay.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I was hoping that the South English teacher might still be on and be able to hear me. My name is Elizabeth Kolb, and I am a high school math teacher. I have been successfully full-time in the classroom for this entire school year. I'm teaching live to students who are sitting in front of me in the class, but also to students who are working remotely at home. And we've done it with great success. It, I will say, it was, you know, a challenge the first couple of days to get the hang of everything. But it's going really well, and our students, both in front of us in person and remote, are thriving. So I do encourage Nashua School District to give this a try. I will say it's been wonderful for the students. The teachers have adapted, and it's just working really well for for everybody, so I really hope that you guys can make a decision to get the the kids back in person and let the teachers do their thing. They're they're good at it and and they will make it work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paula. Alright, Ms. Consilla, was that our one person, or is there more? We have another. Alright, thank you so much. Alright, caller two seven five five.
Hi, my name is Diana Lavoy, and I'm a teacher at the Pennachuck Middle School. I wanted to speak to, how can we look at the level of school impact? If there's no one really currently, I mean, we only have a small population in school right now. So I'm worried about moving forward that matrix and looking at the school impact. And when the principals speak about families having to go remote on days when we don't have enough staff, how will the families handle those random remote days when they can't have their students in school? And also with in-person lesson being taught at the same point as our remote lessons, I teach science, and I want to use those in-person days for experiments and activities with my in-person kids. I don't think I'll really be able to teach those remote kids the same lesson at the same time. And I wanted to know if the community, when we talk about that matrix, is Nashua, or are we talking about Mid-Hampshire as a whole? So I still have a lot of questions, and I'm sure a lot of parents, staff, and students do as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, caller. Alright, caller number zero six three four.
Good evening. This is Adam Marqu, president of the Nashua Teachers Union. I'd first like to acknowledge and thank the committee for having public comment, which is not always a standing policy with the committee, so thank you for allowing the public to speak. I have a few notes written down, because I'm going to be honest with you, there were times that I had no idea what was happening in this meeting tonight. And I don't say that to be disrespectful or rude. It was very challenging to follow what was happening from a perspective of someone at home listening. I wanted to point out that, yes, we have five children with cases in our schools. But there's less than three hundred of them in the building. I'm not saying that as a point of contention, I'm just saying that as a point of fact, that we don't have those children in the building right now. The, I'm really concerned about this survey and the implications it's going to have. I get that we need to do it, and I get principals need the time to go through it, and I get that our data people need time to go through it. But if we're changing wording in what one format looks like and versus another, and does remote and remote stays full remote, but all the other options are changing, parents can't make a rational decision without all the information before they do that, and I don't think it's fair for them to have to do that without the all information. This is the same argument we had in the spring. I'm sorry, in the the summer, when you pick remote or hybrid, well, what does hybrid look like? What did remote look like? No one knew, and here we are again, we know what remote looks like, but we don't know what with the discussions tonight, what hybrid, in-person, et cetera, and what our options are truly going to be. And I would be it would be unfortunate that if we do all this survey work and then the board makes a change at the November or December meeting, and the impact that would have on the seventeen schools and the administration that's going to spend hours trying to sort through this to make everything as copasthetic as they can. We talked about the certified staff and why we don't have any. Well, let me tell you that the numbers nationwide of people going into the education prep courses has continued to drop staggeringly over the last five years, and one of the reasons might be because we have people elected to boards and to to, whether it's in Nashua or the state or whatever, that have nothing nice to say about educators, and we're lazy. And we do nothing, we don't, we only work six days, we, six hours a day, we're part-time, and we have our summers off. I wouldn't want to send anyone into a climate where we're treated like that, and that's one of the reasons why people aren't getting their certifications to be teachers. Who needs that abuse every day from people that are elected to make decisions for us? So that's one thing, and I have been screaming at the top of my lungs since I've been president of the union, which is five years now, that we don't have enough substitutes. What makes it, what makes people think that because we raised our rates in we're in the middle of a pandemic, that we're going to magically have more people? I don't understand where that logic comes from. And the state is not going to waiver on their requirements to have certified educators in the district, and why would we want them to? I'm just flabbergasted by that whole, I get we're problem-solving and trying to come up with ideas that may work that are different than normal, but I I don't want a non-certified educator sitting in front of my kids. That's what they're going to be doing, is sitting in front of my kids. So there's that. I would also point out that a lot of what you talked about is tied to memorandums of understanding that this board approves and agreed to with the Nashua Teachers Union. That would require negotiation with the teachers' union, including those metrics you mentioned tonight. And I think that's it. I covered everything else. I I I don't know what the right answer is. I've said that numerous times. And, you know, board members keep saying, well, parents want this. Well, you you forget the other side, that there are parents who want their kids out of school, but I guess because we have the remote option, they have that option, and this is the other side of the the, the coin that want their kids in, that some feel that aren't, is, that, that, in a frame, it isn't an option right now. So I can understand that piece. So, um, I would end with, um, I don't think everyone's going to be happy. I don't think I'm going to leave happy. I don't think I'm going to get everything that I want out of this thing. I don't think the district's going to do that. I don't think the board's going to do that. And I don't think parents are. And I don't know where that leaves us, but, um, I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have caller 3219. Can you hear us? 3219?
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I, I apologize. I had it on mute, but it wouldn't be on. My name is Wendy Keefe. I'm a parent of Nashua South Senior. And, um, I understand that tonight's meeting was probably very frustrating to a lot of people. I appreciated the, um, the creative ideas that we're trying to come forward. Um, I can tell you that as a parent of a student that wants to be back in person, um, I agree with the sentiments of, of those of you who said, um, that we need to come up with a plan. I also love and respect Mrs. Rourke and wonderful teachers like her, and she needs to have the time to plan and to adjust to a new mode, potential new mode of education, even if it's a couple of days. That being said, um, I strongly disagree with the principal's schedule in bringing back the ninth graders first. I think one of those Friday days could be a wonderful day to have one hour with masks, with gloves, tour of the building for those who wish to do so. You could probably roll that out over a couple of Fridays, um, for example. And I think, as I've stated multiple times, the seniors need to be the first ones back in the building, if nothing else, as a sign of good faith to these kids who have lost so much between last year and this year. Um, I think that it cannot be ignored. I've asked this specifically, that seniors be the first ones back in that high school building. I think it would do an enormous amount for their morale. And, um, I need that to be strongly considered by both the board and the administration. Thank you so much. I wish you all best of luck in getting our kids back in the buildings that want to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Caller 5194.
Hello, I'm John Michael Pearson. I live at 28 Massachusetts Drive in Nashua, New Hampshire. I am a teacher in the district and also a parent. And I'm sitting here listening to this meeting, and there's a couple of people trying, and a lot of people giving excuses and can't, can't do this, we can't do that. But no one's thinking outside the box of the schedule. It travels an issue. Let's get rid of, uh, let's extend it because of vacation by a week. Come back to school on January 11th, so kids don't lose their whole week. No remote, just extend it and get rid of February vacation. So then with Mrs. Johnson's complaint, we don't have to go back again. Let's get rid of February vacation. We don't need February vacation. No one can go anywhere anyway. So why are we having people travel when they can't travel? So let's think outside the box. Let's come up with a plan. Let's stop saying we can't, and let's start saying we can. That's what teachers are supposed to do, and administration's supposed to do. The two high school administrations, a, a lot of us can't, right? A lot of us can't. I get it. They have big buildings, but we got to start saying we can. We got to start saying we can do it. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you.
You very much. Bye.
Caller number 7194.
Hello, um, this is Kellyanne Dyno. Thank you for taking my calls. I did want to respond to some comments that were made by Bobby Bagley earlier this evening. Um, she discussed the potential exponential increase of cases in congregational settings, which does make sense if that setting didn't take precautions. Under her logic, hospitals and doctors' offices would be seeing significant outbreak. We are not seeing that. Transmissions are occurring in the youth population right now because they are not, um, excuse me, they are in uncontrolled environments. There are studies out there, including ones by Brown University, showing that being in school is safer and actually mitigates the number of cases in this age group because of the, of the controls that can be instituted. I further want to say there's a lack of movement here because of fear. No plans are being made because everyone is fearful of making a mistake. I get that. It's natural. Respectfully, get over it. Mistakes will be made. Make a plan, go forward, and adjust. If you need something to give you comfort, all you need to do is look at the New Hampshire Fall Force Program. As Ms. Jinger said in our last board meeting, not a single case of COVID was seen across our entire state of New Hampshire. That's with kids in close contact sweating and breathing heavily on each other. There's your proof. We can do this with proper protocols in place. Please make a plan and move forward. Thank you.
Caller 3801.
Hi, my name is Amy Medling, and I chose an in-school learning model, the hybrid model, for my two children. Um, one is in middle school and one is in high school. And I was very disappointed tonight to hear that we are still not much closer to having that choice for our kids to go back to in-school learning. Um, I'm especially concerned about the amount of instructional hours, especially for my middle school student. As you know, middle schoolers are only getting two instructional periods for each of their main subjects a week. And although the teachers are doing a remarkable job with, you know, what they've been given, my mother was a middle school teacher for 30 years, and I know how hard it is to reach those kids. And her teachers are doing a great job, and my son's teachers in the high school are doing a great job too. But there is something that you just don't get when you're not able to be in a classroom, interacting with other students and teachers. I am concerned, especially for my daughter, that the learning gap is going to grow, especially when we look at surrounding communities whose students have them back to a normal schedule. Both of my kids play AAU sports, and they've been playing them all fall. And they are playing with students that are in school from lots of different surrounding communities. I am hoping that Nashua can really pull together to do better for our kids and get them back into school. And I just also want to say that I've heard from a, a tremendous amount of families that are struggling, um, you know, and it has nothing to do with, with the teachers. It's just these children, like my daughter, are learners that need to be in a classroom setting. I hope that we can figure out a plan that, so those children can be back during this next semester. Thank you.
Thank you very much. 8887.
Good evening. This is Tom Daley calling. Uh, thank you for taking the call. Uh, we've shut down a massive machine that drives education for 11,000 students across the city of Nashua. We have matrices from the state of New Hampshire that give us information about how to consider reopening our schools, and yet we're not looking at it. Um, and part of those matrices, I agree with other callers who've called in, are somewhat inconclusive, incomplete in the sense that, um, they don't define stage zero to understand what the level of impact is to various schools. So I want to reiterate what a prior caller said, which is that we have to start somewhere. We have to get some kids back into a full-time in-school environment, so that way we can understand what this machine looks like as it starts to reopen and run again. And there's a number of families, parents, and students across this district that are willing to accept the risk of being in a full-time classroom environment again. And I think that the BOE, as well as the administration, needs to make some plans to accommodate those parents and those students who are willing to accept that level of risk and get back into the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, caller 8041.
Hi, my name is Tara Ozinski, and I'm a teacher in the Nashua School District, as well as a lifelong resident of Nashua on 31 Granite Street in Nashua. I'm calling because I'm really concerned about some of the conversations that have happened tonight, and a general misunderstanding of what we're doing as educators in this school district, and also a concern for us as a community. Um, I think what's being lost in all these discussions is that partnership that we had before with our families in the community. And it almost feels like at times, families are almost pitted against teachers, and like, um, it's being framed in a way that, you know, we are failing your, your students. And that's what I hear. I hear Mrs. Johnson say it. And I just think that, um, a lot of teachers are feeling disrespected because every day we come in and we do what is best for our kids. Um, and our kids aren't falling behind. We've always had kids with challenges, and as teachers in this district, we are doing everything we can to educate our children. Um, we're trying new strategies and methods, and yes, we've had to adapt. We've had to try different approaches, but we are doing that, and we're dedicating hours and hours of time to do this. So I'm just going to ask, and this is what my call is really about, um, to frame the conversation just a little bit differently, and to really, um, just change when we talk about failing our students to, and our students not being educated when they're being educated remotely. They are being educated. We are instructing students. We are working every day on Zoom. We're there to support them socially and emotionally. And I'm just asking us to really come together as a community and reflect on that and work together, regardless of the path we choose, but just reminding everyone to be respectful of that and understand that the decisions that we make go beyond individual students. And if we do decide, you know, to go full in person, there are impacts for every member of the community of Nashua. And we do need to think about that. So it's not just about spreading schools. It's about spreading our community. Um, and just to keep those things in mind when we're making these decisions. Thank you.
And this is our last one.
All right. Thank you very much. 3811. Caller 38, or I'm sorry, 3711. If you- Caller, if you're able to mute your television? Yep, caller-
Sorry, I had to shut my television off. It wasn't letting me mute it.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is, my name is Sarah. I'm a parent in the district. Currently this year, I have pulled out my children, um, and I'm homeschooling. But, uh, the goal has always been from day one to get them back into school full-time. Um, my children miss their teachers. Um, and the only reason we decided to homeschool was just because it was just too difficult to manage with the different schedules with three different kids and a three-year-old at home. Um, you know, I'm, I'm listening to as much of this meeting as I can in between bedtime and sports, and I have to echo what another parent said. There's way too much of what we can't do. We have to, somebody's got to be willing, like, well, not somebody, the whole board. We, we have to be willing to move forward. There are going to be mistakes. Things aren't going to go perfectly, but we can't just sit here and live in fear and teach our children to live in fear and to be afraid to do anything. It is not servicing them well at all. My kids' education is fine because of, we're on a regular curriculum, but emotionally and socially, they are definitely suffering, and they want to be with their friends. They want to be with the amazing teachers that we have in this district. They're probably sick of me at this point. Um, but we're just, we're just running around in circles, still the same thing. And my kids are also playing AAU sports, and I'm talking with other parents, and it's embarrassing. Nashua is embarrassing. It's like the laughing stock of the surrounding communities. We have got to stop the nonsense and get these children back in school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody who called in tonight and, uh, everyone participating in public comment. Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Johnson, go ahead. Do you have a response?
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for calling this evening and giving us their viewpoint. I think it's very important. I also want to say that, listening to some parents, and I want to thank, um, Mr. Markku, um, because he's in education and he deals with, um, his faculty, his teachers. But I think that, um, we need to have that plan in place. And I think that survey, the polling, needs to really reflect. I agree with Mr. Markku about the problems we have in the past. It needs to reflect whether or not they want to send their student back to full or remote. Eliminate the hybrid, the full or the remote, and then this way we get a clear picture of what parents want in the district. Then you can work your calendar around this. We seem to go backward forward. You need to start to go forward and then build everything around that because it's, I agree. I agree with the last caller. I mean, we're a big district. We should be the leaders out there. It goes Manchester, Nashville, Concord. We should be leaders out there, and we're not. And so I'm going to hope that the administration will go back to the drawing board, and it can be done, and it can be done right. And if it doesn't get out tomorrow, it can get out on Friday or Monday with the option for full school or remote. And let's see what the community, because the last time we only did hybrid and remote, let's see what the community wants. And then we can build our schedules and go from there, and for everybody to return in January. And I think that's the best way to do it. And again, I want to thank everybody for calling, and I don't want anybody to think that I don't appreciate what everybody does in the district. I'm just seeing two and a half days compared to being five days or four days a week really makes a difference in the kid's education, the kid's psyche. And I think we have to look, if we do social, emotional learning, and we're dealing with the kids as a whole, then we have to look at their learning and their emotional piece as a whole. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Um, Ms. Raymond, do you have any remarks?
Uh, no, I would just move to adjourn when you're ready.
Okay. No, thank you very much. All right. Uh, we have motion to adjourn. Seconded, uh, if I may, just for one second, I do want to tell everyone who called in how much I appreciate it. I want to tell all the administrators and teachers that have helped out in this call, nursing department and director heads, directors, I really do appreciate it. Um, we should remind people that the survey that's going to go out in their inbox is not a survey, whether you prefer the in-person to remote method. It is a commitment, whether you want to go remote for the first, for the second semester of school. So I just want to be clarified, it's more of like a form than a survey. Um, so in your responses, and maybe that will help us approach this from a different perspective, something like, um, Mr. Fosorano had suggested as a remote academy and a in-person academy, so that people can assume their level of risk that they're willing to take. So please do fill that out if you are interested in staying remote for their second semester. And hopefully, the rest of us can get back in person. So, um, I appreciate everyone every tonight. And in closing, we'll go ahead and take the vote to adjourn. Thank you for sticking around so long. Go ahead, Ms. Raymond.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Brown votes to adjourn. Yes, thank you so much. Um, we are adjourned at 9:09. Thank you all. I appreciate it. I hope you have a wonderful evening.